Good evening, it's the June 27, 2022, meeting of the Planning Board. Call to order. And the first thing on the agenda is the master plan update. Notice me. What update? This is the, the proof of the 2021 master plan. It's out to print. It looks fabulous. Um, the updated copies on the, the website.
Yeah, on the front page.
On the front page, um, in the banner. It's now the updated copy. In check. Very, very talented. The next thing, any comments on the master plan update?
Just well done. It's a long haul, a lot of effort, and I wish this could last longer than 10 years.
Sometimes it does. All right, the next thing on the agenda, um, review the master plan implementation committee charge. Has everyone had a chance to look at that? Any comments on that? Karina or Jesse?
No, I thought it was very good. Well written.
Same, no comments.
Yeah? No? So I guess I'll entertain a motion to establish a master plan implementation committee.
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
We have in all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Yeah, and yes, Demaria, yes.
Very good. The committee has established. Now, appoint the members. We've had, we have four that have volunteered from the committee to be on the implementation committee. Debbie De Maria, Judith Watson, who is the master plan magician. Lisa Braccio. And Kat McKee. We have one vacancy, but I think we can entertain a motion to
So moved.
In a second.
Seconded.
All in favor, Latrell, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes. Mimi, did you hear my vote?
Yes. Waiting for screen sharing. It's up.
Oh, well, I'm gonna just
Oh, okay, so you're, so to appoint the numbers to the committee?
Voting, Jesse was the guest.
Oh, sorry.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the planning board has one appointment to the Public Works Planning Board. And we have one of the current members, Sue Boust is looking to be reappointed, and also Debbie De Maria has expressed an interest in being on the Public Works Planning Board. And the committee has gotten a lot of attention lately because there's been a lot going on at the DPW that town residents believe should have some public dealing and some public oversight, but the Public Works Planning Board hasn't met. So I would be in favor of the term Debbie De Maria.
I have a comment, so just in doing my diligence, it looks like the Public Works Planning Board, there's quite a lot of disruption in the town around Karen Gallego and the DPW. The last public has posted agenda was January 27, 2021. There's no minutes posted nor response after a request to post a public minutes. So it would say that for a year and a half, this has been not functioning or no meetings, which I find alarming, a little worrisome. So I would second your recommendation for Debbie De Maria.
Sure. So I just want to let you know, I put in a public records request for any contract or a list of, list of contracts that VHB was awarded to do work for the town. I thought maybe that's a way to find out, how many, how many projects maybe should have come before the Public Works Planning Board, just as a place to start. It wasn't comprehensive, but it's the public records request, I think it's maybe number 47 or 48. And there's maybe, you know, I don't know, eight or so projects that started in the last couple of years, none of which have gone to the Public Works Planning Board. The traffic studies that Mr. Dennyton is doing with the VHB engineer is really something that should have gone to the Public Works Planning Board. I've given Mr. Dennyton a copy of, you know, how other towns handle the requests for truck exclusions on their roads. He decided to do a little kind of truck exclusion study, but that's really not something that select boards usually take up themselves. That's usually something that goes to the town engineer and the Public Works Planning Board. And then last is the St. Mark's Triangle, which I don't believe went to the Public Works Planning Board. So as a part of that, we know that public shade trees were removed. There was a small historic stone wall that was removed. And for some reason, we're talking about having a parking lot in our town center. So really, I think that would have been the ideal kind of project that the advisory would just take up. And then we could hear from people in the community to find out their comments. So here we are, years down the road on the St. Mark's project, and people are just starting to, you know, and frustrated as well. Because they, they don't know where they were supposed to express these comments. They should have expressed these comments of the Public Works Planning Board when they were being planned. So just as a reminder, that board is, was put into place for the planning, managing, and financing of said town. And so that would be the perfect project because the planning, the planning, we don't know how this went publicly, I guess, as a citizen. I don't know. It was very poorly managed, and it was poorly financed, to the point now we're all trying to figure things out. So that's a perfect example of something that shouldn't have gone to the Public Works Planning Board. That's a board that shouldn't be, shouldn't wait for the select board or even the DPW to give them their assignments. And I have a lot of ideas that I can bring to that board.
Jesse or Karina?
Uh, yeah, so I read the email from the current chair of the board in question advocating for the reappointment of Sue Boust. And I'm wondering, since I'm not there in person tonight, unfortunately, just curious if any members of the Public Works Planning Board, Mr. Boland, Ms. Boust are present tonight, and if they have anything to say about this?
Um, yes, they are both present.
Okay. Well, I'd be curious to hear their, you know, responses to Mr. Maria's comments before, um, before I were to vote.
To Mr. Boland or Ms. Boust?
Thank you. Am I supposed to look anywhere special or just?
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Bill Boland, chairman of the Public Works Planning Board, former selectman, member of the advisory committee, and longtime town resident. First, I'd say I've been very disheartened by the attacks on the Public Works Planning Board and myself personally from members now of this committee who accused me of being a former DPW employee and superintendent. So they don't even know who I am, but they're making accusations against me and making accusations against our committee. Our committee was founded in 1991 as part of the establishment of the Public Works Department. We took the highway department, the water department, the cemetery commissioners, and the tree warden, and to save the town money, combined them into the Public Works Department. The board was responsible for, early on, trying to help the selectmen implement what a public works department would look like, having eliminated other elected boards who had jurisdiction over those departments beforehand. So there was a lot of work in the initial years to get that all taken care of. It seemed to go well. It was, John Boland was appointed as the first superintendent, former water commissioner was appointed as the deputy superintendent. Everything has gone pretty well with that, you know, over the years. And the Public Works Planning Board kind of eased out a little from that initial role into what was requested by the DPW for us to study and what was requested by the Board of Select. The Public Works Planning Board has absolutely no authority whatsoever. If you look at the statute, if you look at how it was set up, whatever else, we are an advisory board that advises the Board of Select. When they have projects for us to look at, or the DPW superintendent has a project as, is coming up next month with water infrastructure with a potential connection for Hawkinson to the new WRA through South Row, portable road infrastructure, and some other things. Sure, you all know how difficult it's been for boards to meet during the pandemic, to try and get everybody together, some who really aren't Zoom friendly and other things to do that. And again, we meet when there's a project for us to consider. The DPW now falls under some partial oversight from the newly established Capital Works or Capital Planning Board or whatever. So there's additional scrutiny of DPW in that manner. We have met when required. Again, you see that next month, we're trying to meet on several different things. But we do not meet just to ask the DPW superintendent why she's doing something like this, because that's not within our authority. The authority for the DPW is the Board of Select. They oversee Karen, all of her employees, her contract, and everything else. Really doesn't have to have anything to do with us. And any vote from us on something we study is only advisory to the Board of Select. So I think there is an opinion that we should be like some of these other towns that may have an oversight board for public works as some have for public safety and others. South Row does not. We are not an oversight board. We are there to assist selectmen and to do DPW superintendent when they're looking for, you know, some guidance and a, and a board to study. Again, you know, now there are a lot of other boards that want to look into this over the DPW superintendent's shoulder. The advisory committee is, is studying a lot of things with that. The, as I say, the capital group, we're going to be meeting jointly with the capital group. So there's, there's a lot more things there. But again, the thought that we have any oversight of anything within public works is, it, it's false. We don't. We, we simply advise on things we're asked to advise on.
Well, so there are a lot of advisory committees in South Row, most of them actually. And they don't wait to be asked to, to often give advice on something in their purview. And the, you know, the charge is very broad that says the board should advise the Board of Selectmen in matters of planning, managing, and financing of said town.
That's right.
And I think what's happened is that there have been a lot of projects that people didn't know about and have blown up because there've been no, there's been no public oversight. But the Public Works Planning Board didn't meet eight times in 2016, five times in 2017, five times in 2018, and then once in 2019, twice in 2020, once in 2021. No times this year. So you're saying there's been nothing going on in town since 2019?
Nothing that was deemed important enough, enough for us to study. Now, there are different opinions of people. We have one member who thinks we should, you know, meet as much as every other month, month, or every other week, excuse me, to discuss some of these things. The rest of the board has determined, you know, there was a suggestion that we should be the tree hearing board. It's not within our purp. There are other boards in town, yourselves and the Board of Selectmen, that are responsible for tree hearings. It, it, it does not fall to us at just as several other things with us that would, that would cause us to meet again. And last, you know, we have very good communications with the DPW superintendent and the Board, the Board of Select. If they're not looking for any information, my committee has determined, we're not looking to go out and stir things up and provide that, more than willing to meet.
Not stir things up, but I just think it would be helpful to the DPW superintendent if these things were vetted in public, and then she wouldn't be taking all the heat. That it was never vetted and where this come from and, you know.
If she wants it vetted by someone else, you know, she's, she's the expert. She's an engineer. She has engineers that she hires to do these things as well. She has a professional staff that does this work.
Yeah, but there's not public access to, to these discussions.
Well, okay. Do people want to ask questions? Do people want to ask questions of the Board of Selectmen?
Yeah.
Then they should ask the Board of Selectmen, and if they don't have the answers, they should ask us to look into it. Again, this town seems to be becoming one which everybody wants to have oversight over everyone and second guess what they do.
Oversight, it's called transparency, and people in town want to know what's going on.
Well, people can ask the Board of Selectmen, who are the ones that make those decisions. Again, you know, they can ask us, they've asked us on, on several things, or Karen has asked us if there is difficulty in studying some of these things, or if she feels she's very capable of doing it. I mean, the town, when, when a department operates, the police department, the fire department, don't have boards that do their things for them.
Intersections.
What's that?
They're not redoing intersections and putting a parking lot.
They're arresting people, you know, doing fire prevention, so. But, I mean, that's, that's your board and the selectman's job to deal with trees. We have, we have no authority over trees.
Well, it was, they were cut down on the plan that may have been vetted at an earlier time, and that could have been another.
But there's a DPW superintendent, there's a tree ward. That's their job. We like to let people do their jobs. We're there for advice, but we're, we're not looking to second guess people. We've participated in many projects over the years, transfer station, water super, uh, water infrastructure and other things, as I mentioned in, in my email. But it just seems like now that people are unhappy with the superintendent, so they want some way for her to have oversight. Again, that's not us. We've, we've done
Saying oversight, I'm saying transparency.
Ask the question. I mean, people are more than willing to file freedom of information requests and other things, or go to the selectmen's meeting when they're voting on these things and ask them where the transparency is. Why are they deciding to do that? I mean, Ms. Boust has been on this committee for several years. She's done a very good job participating in these things, whatever else. But again, you know, in 2019, Mr. Steiners wanted us to get more involved in, you know, things with the DPW and the board. Four to one voted, but no, that, that's not our charge. If the selectmen want us to be more involved in some of these things, they can present that to us, and we're, we're more than willing to meet. And I might add, you know, the, the last time an appointment was up with the planning board, I reached out. Planning board never contacted us for, you know, our input on, you know, whether we thought the members should be reappointed. What's that?
You don't get in.
That's, that's how it works in this town. This is the only appointment that you have. And when I reached out, the planning board didn't even know they had an appointment. So, I mean, you may, you may smirk and other things, but I dealt with the former chairman of this board for a long time, and we were in close contact on a lot of these issues. So it, it, it kind of seems to me like the deck is stacked because people want to make changes because they don't like the DPW superintendent.
No one said that.
No, why not?
My, my concern is that this board has a very valuable role to play, and it just doesn't meet.
You know, you don't have to meet if you don't have something to do. As I say, we're not going to go study what roads need to be paved, which happens every year, because the DPW superintendent knows that better than we do. When there are things, as I say, you know, we look at transfer station issue, when, when those are
Not the ones this year because you didn't meet.
Because there were no suggested changes.
Or the other one.
Such as?
No longer take mattresses. There were different rules and regulations.
That's, that's state regulation.
Well, so I don't know about the DPW. I just know that Karen was before the Board of Selectmen and said, no, this hasn't gone before the Public Works Planning Board because they didn't meet, and I didn't have time.
So, so there wasn't available time for her to meet with us, so what should we do?
Well, so, all right.
I mean, obviously, we're going to disagree on some of these things. As I say, I feel that there is an effort. Ms. De Maria, who wants to be on the board, I guess, was very vocal about she wanted us to become the tree people. And that was not our role. And again, then we were accused of, you know, I was accused of being someone that I wasn't. So, and at no time did anyone on this board, did anyone accuse us of doing things, or the Board of Selectmen, to reach out to contact us to say, you know, can we talk about, can we have a meeting because we're concerned that we think some more things should be going on to provide assistance to the selectmen in this or to the DPW superintendent. At no time, I get copied from superintendent. You know, I, I find it very discouraging that someone on another board would not reach out to the board that she's criticizing, at least to the chairman, and just say things at public meetings and other things about my committee without ever attempting to contact me. I have a town email. We all have town emails. So if we want to talk about transparency and communication, then why weren't we contacted?
Uh, well, I was just wondering, you said there, there was a vote four to one not to get more involved with projects. Do you recall who the one person was, Mr. Steiners, who proposed it?
So, thank you, Mr. Boland, for your perspective. I think the, my point is that there are many things we weren't aware of, and they only became aware because our town planner was doing her job in diligence. And that's how I, as a member of the planning board. So the, the, the point that we're trying to make is that it's not a point about the superintendent and that issue right now. It's the issue that for 18 months, this, you have not met. But there have been some significant things that the DPW has been involved in. We're not asking for oversight, but just an opportunity for public comment and advisory. I think if those happened, maybe planning board members would have been real, would have realized that there were proposed. I personally live on Clifford Road. There was a Deerfoot Flag Road, part of six streets that were going to be reconstructed. No one knew about that. I only found out about it through my town planner. So, and that was pretty much after Karen had signed a contract. So my point is that it's better to have an open forum where people can have opinions to voice that if it's too late, a contract's been signed, a contract's signed. So how do we, how do we, as a public body and a community, have input into that process? That's what we hope and what I believed when I read the charter of the Planning Board Board, the Public Works Planning Board with the planning, managing, and financing advisory capacity, that, that it would do that.
Right, and, and that was the original setup 30 years ago. In
But what's changed? Why would you not?
Basically, basically, the departments work well together. They don't need all that meeting and everything else. The selectmen decide things on themselves without us. And then again, you know, if the charge comes through to us, but again, it's, we're not like some of you boards that has a regular role, that this is what we do all the time. Operational, the DPW runs themselves. People might, people might think, of course they do, the police department runs themselves.
It has some issues over the last 18 months that you have not met. That's all I'm saying.
Well.
There's, it's, I believe it's time for some sort of change, some more proactivity.
Well, I would, I would suggest that you allow Ms. Boust to speak after me because she's the member who, who you're looking to oust. Because people don't seem to like the way that the DPW runs. You know, maybe it's time we have a public safety oversight board and oversight over some of the other departments.
I just wanted to add, um, in many towns, actually, the DPW superintendent doesn't really even attend these meetings, or if they tend, they just listen. Really, it's about providing the plans so that people have a voice, they know where to go, they can call up, they can tune in, they can drop in, and they see what's going on, they know what's going on in the roads. I don't see this as much about the DPW superintendent as really getting the people a voice. And I just want to remind you that this is a legislative act, so this body has to meet. It has to be an advisory, so it's different than the police. Police don't have an advisory board. Fire doesn't have an advisory board. This was a ballot initiative back in late 1990, I think, or maybe 91, we came on a legislative act. So it's an advisory, it's there. You can't just decide that it's not going to function as an advisory. So we're starting to see Ms. Gallego go straight to the select board. I've contacted several of the members to alert them to say, I don't think you should entertain that without some proper advisory. Many of the advisory boards don't wait to be contacted. The capital planning group comes up with an agenda, the advisory board comes up with an agenda. You're not waiting for the select board to give them things to do. And that's the way that I see that this, this, as well, and this is a legislative act, we have to meet.
Do you know why it's a legislative?
Because it was a ballot initiative.
Well, it was to form the Public Works Planning.
Yeah, they were formed at the same time.
And, and, and that's what we did. And if you ask anyone involved at the time, it probably should have had a sunset clause on it after everything was up and running smoothly.
Well, in the future, maybe.
No, it, it didn't.
Doesn't have.
But, but again, it's not, this board has never, other than in the initial formation of the Public Works Department, has never met regularly on a monthly basis, on a quarterly basis, or when there were
We met eight times in 2016.
Okay. Do you know what they were looking at?
Five in 2018, so that's
You know what, you know what some of the issues they were looking at?
I don't have all the minutes memorized.
Well, one of, one of the last times when people were disgruntled, when they were talking about farming out the work at the cemetery.
Okay.
So that was, that was one area where people got interested, and there were a lot of people.
So people were interested in it.
Well, then, as I say, there were things going on, starting next month, that the board will be meeting on. And then looking to establish a date to meet, to meet with the capital. But, you know, I've, I've said my piece. I think minds are made up here without ever reaching out to my committee, which I should say without ever reaching out to my committee, which I should say, you know, extremely disappointed about. If if people are disappointed in a committee and they just want to talk at their meetings, whatever else, and not read out, you know, reach out to that other board. I I I'm very disappointed by that. That's not the way town government should work. You may think town government should work that we meet more often. All you had to do was send an email, have the planner call us, have the chairman, who I spoke to all the time, say, can you come talk to us about, you know, maybe you could have a role in treaty hearings or anything else. Nothing. It was just discussion at meetings. We were never contacted, never notified that this was going to be discussed at a meeting, and that's disappointing. It really is to look at our committee and say, we're negligent not meeting. But we were spoken about at meetings and you never reached out to us for the opportunity to give our point of view off. Again, I find that disappointing. So I don't think you folks are doing your job if you're not contacting other committees and you're talking about them at your meetings.
Well, I think we received a a letter which the chair forwarded to you.
That's correct.
So that's not contacting me?
You got a response.
Okay.
And and again, it wasn't addressed to me. I get it. I, it was forwarded to me for response. And and I responded. And it didn't even identify me. It thought I was someone else.
Okay.
So, a- a- again, if we want to talk about, you know, our committees doing their due diligence on things, I'm disappointed by that. So I'm going to step back, if that's what I will do. And I I think you should give Ms. Bous the opportunity to speak because she's been on this committee for seven years. And she'd like to be reappointed. And we'd love to see her reappointed. Thank you.
Mimi, could I just interject one thing? Can you hear me? Okay, um, just in order to try and help reconnect this disconnect a little bit, which seems to be a okay term to use. In looking back at the agendas in two thousand eighteen, there were some items about Deerfoot Road, Flag Road, intersection, the transfer station. And it seems as though as the way it operated then is a little bit more in line, the way the Public Works Planning Board operated then, is more in line of the what is currently the expectation. So I don't know if it was before that the same thing or whatever, but just in looking back, it looked like there were projects that were discussed at the Public Works Planning Board. But somehow, maybe the information didn't come from Public Works Planning Board and maybe make it to the planning board, or I don't know who asked those things to be on the agenda. But, you know, in just looking from an outside view, because I, you know, I've only been here five years or so, but it seems that it it appeared to be functioning like that way the planning board members are works are expecting it to. So it's not like far off. I think that there's like a communication gap between what was actually happening and the experience of people seeing what was happening. I don't think the Public Works Planning Boards were videoed, right, Bill? Back in the, back in eighteen, in in two thousand eighteen and such, they didn't video, they just had meeting minutes, right? For your board?
We we met in the, for the most part, in the conference room at the DPW.
Right.
So they wouldn't have videoed anything down there unless it was something. I can't think of any that were unless it was a big, big project, but.
Something critical.
Yeah.
Okay, so it seems like somewhere along the line, those types of things started to fall off a little bit. And now it's, there's a little bit of resurgence of attention to some of these things. And the planning board, in my opinion, is looking for a place where some of those things get discussed. And maybe if you said, what is the process of getting something on your agenda? Is it strictly from the DPW or does the select board put something on your agenda? Like, how would we go about, like, if there was a concern, what channel would the planning board take to get something on your agenda for a public discussion that wouldn't necessarily fall under planning board jurisdiction?
Perhaps an email to the chairman requesting that they have something on an agenda or asking us to meet on something so they could be on there. A- again, we we report only to the board of select. So, but but when we do things, we would certainly welcome, you know, anything from the planning board or now the the capital planning board, who we're going to be meeting with next month on some different things. Some some things have changed in in recent years with especially, you know, with the new capital board. That has gone through at least two fact, I was on the the capital board before it was disbanded and it went to went to just the administration here. And about two years ago, now we started back back up again. And they seem to be assuming a little more authority on some of these projects and then going to advisory with it. There's nothing that we would ever go to advisory with unless the selectmen asked us to to speak on the behalf of the study we had or whatever. So it's, you know, a- anyone, anyone could make a recommendation or ask for us to discuss something or meet on something. We could have weighed in on several things that people are now saying, you know, the public had a right to have more information. But again, we don't make the decisions. Those decisions go to the selectmen. So the selectmen then have a public meeting. You know, that that the process. If we've been involved and they want us to make a presentation, we we do so, but for the most part, it's at that point, the superintendent and the board of select. And we're just advisory to the superintendent and the, for example, if if we studied like a year and a half ago, when we were studying the new water infra- infrastructure and the implementation of going to Water Enterprise, but we did that due diligence, we looked at things, whatever else, we reported to the superintendent and to the select. Anyone, those were all posted public meetings. Anyone was welcome to come and see, you know, when we get into Zoom, anyone was welcome to, you know, watch those meetings and participate. But for the most part, no one comes to the Public Works Planning Board meetings because they know it's going to go before the selectmen ask us. You've all been involved in things where master plan, most recently, and other things where you get to the meeting and people, oh, I wish we knew, I wish we knew this was going on. Well, we're posted agendas and other things that we chose not to attempt. So there has been, this, there's been less going on in public meetings lately because of COVID. And we haven't met when not required to. Now things are relaxed. There were projects coming up and we're going to be having some more frequent meetings to discuss this stuff. Everybody wants to know what's going to happen with this proposal for Hockton and Get Water. So there'll be meetings on that. Again, from our standpoint, it's only an advisory. We're, you know, preliminary things to see if it makes sense to us to, you know, recommend that the selectmen do it.
And just one more question, Bill, and I I don't want to take up a lot of time here, but, for example. No, that's okay. For example, and it's just from my own insight, when DPW works on something like Complete Streets and they have a a chart, a list of different projects, is it the Public Works Planning Board that prioritizes those? Or they make recommendations to prioritize? Or is it just generally, you know, am I missing anything? You know, like, that seems like something that's, you know, a perfect fit for the Public Works Planning Board when they review those kinds of initiatives.
And and we we did look at the Complete Streets proposal, everything else. And then, but then we, once we bless that, that goes to the operational side of DPW and to the selectmen if they need approval on a particular project. But operational, once, once we look at it, that's up to DPW and then we don't look back and say, you know, you did it different. Because we don't have any authority to say, you know, y- y- you've got to do it this way. This is.
Okay, so you make a recommendation. However, ultimately, the decision of the priority goes to who you're advising.
Goes to, goes to the board of select. And and then, and then if if warranted, they would have public meetings on it and it would be posted. But our recommendations would be before them.
Okay, I understand better. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. My name's Sue Bous. I've been on the planning board, Public Works Planning Board, I don't even know how long. I was on the main street design working with and various other committees. At one point, we, I represented the Public Works Planning Board on the side of that committee. And I don't get involved in deciding what we do or don't do. That the the requests come from Karen or from from the board of selectmen and then we investigate things. And we've done studies on various things. I, I'm I'm very even-handed. I like to listen and just make decisions based on on the input that I get from the people that we talk to. And it's been a very rewarding thing and I really like helping the town. I I don't have any particular agenda. I'm not out to do, make anybody lose their job or anything like that. I want to make things work right and that's what I try to do. So I'm I'm, when I left my last job, they said the voice of Muslim was leaving. So that's what I try to do.
So, thanks for coming in. Appreciate it and thanks for your service to the town and for the Main Street Working Group and everything. So I'm just curious, you've heard a lot of discussion around, say, the triangle or expansion that's happening just down the other street here. What do, what do you see could have happened differently to? Could the board have done anything differently? To bring that to light or knowing what's happened?
I don't think the board could have done anything differently. I think the planning board could have talked to the board of selectmen, board of selectmen could have asked us to look into it. But.
Thank you.
I mean, I, I would at this point, you know, ask about what projects are coming up and see if there's anything that we might want, might need to look into since all this is coming up. Yeah, I will, I would definitely do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, next to, I appreciate it. I know you've dedicated many, many years to possibly different committees, so I appreciate it. I think that my perspective is more about proactivity. And I think that what we've learned over the last year and a half of this committee not meeting, and I understand you're not the one calling the agenda. It's it's just the general concern that I have that the community doesn't have a place to 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 perceive the the what's going on. While select meetings do happen, they they change public comment to only at the very beginning of the meeting. So you're not really allowed, unlike planning board, that's very receptive and open to having exchange, to having ongoing feedback. And so the the select board agendas really limit the ability for townspeople to make comments. And that was actually pretty much specific to what just happened with DPW as an example, but but public comment only happened. So while it's a wonderful suggestion to bring it to the select board, this is, I think, by the charter, the the element was to be a little bit more proactive. And I think what I've seen in the years that have transpired over, Mimi reflected on twenty, you know, twenty sixteen and seventeen and eighteen, there seemed to be a little bit more frequency and fluency. And I think what we can't allow is for employees of the town to make decisions on behalf of the community. And I think that's what the the planning board is intended to be, is that the the community represents the community on a on a board. And I know you've done that over the years. I mean, my personal request would be for more proactivity. So I appreciate you were putting your nomination in. I'm I'm just not going to support that this time around. Thank you.
I just wanted to make a comment. I thank you for sort of that's between. The difference between hearing, I'd like to mention that, morning, is there's, I wish I had in front of me, there's a definition of public hearing, but it's a chance for people in town to meet, interact with their town leaders. And it can be interactive where they learn from each other, there's questions, there's answers. Maybe moves the ball forward, maybe there's just better understanding when you come out of the hearing. We're in a hearing tonight. That's the purpose of this, is to exchange and and move the project forward. Versus bringing something directly to the sort of, in terms of Boland mentioning, is only for public comment. There's no deliberation. There's no interaction with town leaders. So a person can always give a comment to the select board. But it's much different than a public hearing where there's a full understanding of the topic. And that's really what an advisory is all about. I think that that is the beauty of any advisory board, that they can then make a vote, make a recommendation because they've heard from the public. And you don't get that. It's not the same when you have a, just a a quick comment at select.
Based on what I'm hearing tonight, I'm curious to now talk to Karen about what kinds of things are coming that we might look into. Because that's basically what we did with the Main Street Design Working Board. That was all public comment.
Right, and that's how that moved forward. It failed until there was a very open public setting of the project and then the tax. Jessie, do you have any comment?
Yes, Sue, and sorry, Sue, I just wanted to say, you know, thank you very much for your service to the town. Having served on boards and committees over the last ten years, I know it's a big sacrifice and it's a lot of work to serve on these boards and committees. And I personally do not like being in this, in this position of having to make a decision on an appointment between two good candidates. It's a, it's a terrible, you know, spot to be in. But I'm, I have to do my duty as a planning board member. And, you know, Mr. Boland, I also want to thank you for your continued service and the great work you've done for the town of Southborough. And, you know, I've 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 heard both, you know, compelling arguments on both sides. I I feel that section five of chapter four forty-eight really doesn't explicitly state, I suppose I differ from Mr. Boland in this way. I I I feel like this charter does not does not relegate the DPW planning board to a passive slash supportive role. I think that there is room for proactivity on this board. And I I I do agree with Mr. Boland that the communication between the planning board and the Department of Public Works could be better. And that is sort of what's tipping the scale for me because I feel like having Mr. Muria on the Public Works Planning Board will strengthen the relationship and make the communication better. And I, I mean, I really, you know, did not care for the acrimonious nature of of tonight's agenda item. I feel like the exchange, you know, that points to a real lack of understanding between the two, between the two boards at this time. So, Ms. Bous, while I I certainly appreciate and I'm grateful for your service on this committee, I I do support Mr. Muria's appointment. And I think that there's room for for some proactivity and some change on the board. So I support Mr. Muria's appointment. Thank you.
No, thank you very much, Mr. Muria. So, do I hear a motion to someone to be Public Works Planning Board?
I make a motion to appoint Mr. Muria to the Public Works Planning Board.
And is there a second?
Our second appointment, because we only have two appointments. The other three are made by the moderator, correct?
That's correct.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor? Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes?
We can, yes. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm sorry, did Debbie abstain?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
All right. The next item on the agenda, 325 Turnpike Road. When would you want to update us or?
Yes, I absolutely can. A lot has happened since the last planning board meeting, the public hearing on June 6th, which continued the public hearings for the major site plan approval and lid, lower impact development special permit to this evening. As you recall, an extension was granted to the action deadline to July 1st. On June 16th, Chair Persa and Mimi Lutrell, myself, Attorney Pizzoni, representing Ken's Foods, met with Town Council to discuss a potential approach for moving forward in taking action on this project in regards to covering the concerns about the noise at, from the project site. It was a very productive meeting. Out of that, there was a general consensus approach. The applicant would submit a concept plan in a what is now known as a technical protocol for testing effectiveness and ultimately confirming the ability for the sound barrier wall to mitigate the noise. There was email back and forth several times in order to come to terms. And Town Council drafted a condition number 14, which relates to the loading bay night use and also noise from the refrigeration units. In the interim, we did receive a submission number seven from J. Crow Associates, the designer of record, in which they addressed, in which they indicated they addressed the landscaping questions that remained at the last meeting. There was some confusion about planting shown on one plan and why aren't they shown on the other. So, I believe it addressed some of those issues. We also received a email from resident Deb de Moria and Kevin Farrington from 58 Flag Road with comments on the draft decision that we had already reviewed in most part than, let's see, a couple more things here. We received on June 24th, feedback from the Board of Health, Chair Chelsea Malinowski, in regards to a meeting that the Board of Health had with the applicant and the butters on June 21st. We also received a letter to the planning board via Town Council from your butters attorney, Nathaniel Stevens. And then, as of this afternoon, we also received a pretty final draft of condition 14 from Town Council that included some minor or some revisions from a meeting that Town Council had with me and the chair and my assistant Colleen, just to make sure everything was in order for this evening. And that brings us to this evening. You should have all the information you need, and that's what I have. So, a lot happened from the last meeting. And it's my understanding that Attorney Pizzoni is present. And Scott Doty from J. Crow Associates is also here, and most likely, Mr. Born, Warehouse Director from Ken's Foods.
And I should just mention that Planning Board Member Debbie de Moria did recuse herself. Mr. Pizzoni?
Sure. I received the most recent draft of paragraph 14 while I was driving up here. I did have an opportunity to look at it, and Town Council did tell me that it was more to form in substance, 100%, I looked at it, I talked it over with my clients. We're fine with number 14 in that last file, long draft.
Oh.
Yeah. I mean, you made a couple more edits, I think. Yeah, and that's fine. We're fine with them. So, we're ready to move forward on that. I believe we went through the decisions previously on all the other, you know, findings, and you actually had looked at those and voted that they were appropriate order the last time we did. And we were just working on coming up with 14. I believe Karina hit everything that I was aware of that has come in. So, we're ready to proceed forward, I think. And Scott, I think you got the last set of plans.
Right.
With all those revisions. So, if there's no further questions for us, we're ready to move forward.
Comment from the board. Mr. Mills?
Oh, I'd say it's been a long time getting here.
It has.
Appreciate the the partnership to get us to this point. Understanding, I think, on both sides. Considering, you know, the number of meetings that have been planned and all of them. You know, for whatever reasons, there's been a lot of extensions and everything. You know, I think there's been a lot of uptake on both sides of the truth to get to this point, which I'm glad we're found here.
One other point I would make, I did find out from Mr. Coats today that he and the other expert are planning to get out to Ken's in the next few days to start some of their tests. They won't go with the full wall testing. They're going to do some onsite and also figure out how they're going to do the boom to test a foot and a half above where the wall would be, because they have to hang, hang something up there. So, it, it's moving forward already.
Off the table at one. Mr. Stein?
Hi, Bill and Scott. If we could just kind of walk through condition 14 and its final agreed upon state. So, if I'm reading this correctly, we, we have the draft conceptual plan.
Yeah.
And then, within 60 days of the decision, you're going to complete the sound study. And then, within 90 days, come back. So, I, this, now, so in 90 days, there's going to be, what, a reappearance before this board for the modification?
Yeah, we would file a modification to get your approval to move forward with the construction of the sound wall or whatever mitigation we come up with, you know, as a final plan. Because we have to come back to you to show, if you look on that plan, it's right in the middle of the parking lot. And part of our drainage and wetlands infrastructure control is under that pavement. We want to make sure that footings are going to be able to be properly placed and traffic safety. It's going to be able to circulate as well as public safety vehicles in the facility. Conceptually, we've looked at it. We think it can work, but until we get all the sound modeling and everything done, you know, we can't move forward with designing. So, that's why we have the 60 days to get it all put together, decide what the modeling tells us we have to build. And then, we have another 30 days after that to get a plan into you.
So, it seems like this sort of covers the town in that, I mean, if I'm understanding this correctly, we, we, there won't be like a final, I was going to use the word certificate of occupancy, but there wouldn't be a final, like, sign off by the, the building department until all of this was fulfilled, including our, our approval of a modification. Does that seem to be the case from your perspective?
I mean, in reality, it wouldn't have, we wouldn't get a certificate of occupancy probably well in advance of everything else being done, because it'll take us through the winter and into next year sometime to build the addition. So, yeah, I, I think you have it correct there.
Okay. In that case, I don't have any other questions at the moment. Thank you.
Sue, with you.
Yeah, so I guess in reviewing kind of the barrage of emails from today, so what I, and Karina, maybe you can help me. I understand that the butters had requested the most recent version of this, and I guess the most recent went out at 4 o'clock. Is that right?
Yes, or close to.
Okay.
Okay, I was under the impression it was the board that came back with those.
No, no, no. I'm just saying that the, the board talked at 2 o'clock, but you shared that with the butters attorney as well. Oh, okay.
No, it was to be shared at the meeting this evening.
Yeah, that's, that's what's my understanding.
So, I guess I would just want to focus on part three. So, it says in the event that the study referenced above does not result in a conclusion that a sound barrier enclosure will be effective, or in the event the board does not approve the proposed sound barrier. And the applicant should be required to redesign suitable sound mitigation for submitted support within 30 days following such conclusion or disapproval. So, I'm a little confused by section three. What is, what is the, what is an approvable sound plan? Is that, is that the consensus between the two sound experts, the board and the Board of Health?
Correct. Yeah. And actually, I'm glad you brought that up, because when I saw that and thought about it again, if we have to redesign something 30 days, that might be a little tight. We can ask, that's why we put the thing in the, in the bottom five, that we can extend the time when it's, if we come back to the board. So, I just wanted to point that out. If for some reason you guys decide that the, after the experts say they don't like it, you need to redo something else, it's probably going to take more than 30 days, but we'll ask for that at that point.
Okay. But that's what that three was intended to do, based on your conversation with Council of Talerman, Karina?
Yes. So, to be clear, the the conceptual sound barrier that we have in the plans and is mentioned in this is what was proposed by the sound expert that works for Ken's.
Yeah, and, and as reviewed by the Board of Health, who felt that it was the proper way to go as well.
Well, the Board of Health agreed on the protocol for testing. They did not agree on any type of sound barrier wall.
Well, we agreed that once we get the, all the material back and determine if it's effective, yeah, that they're okay with it. Yeah, I guess you're right. They improved the protocol upfront. They haven't, they haven't decided what's the best way to go yet, because we don't have the sound in it, so.
Right. And that's going to be a collaboration with the, the two sound experts.
Right.
So, that may be the way to go, but it may not be also.
May not be.
Okay.
Okay. And right, and that's what my clarity is. And I think that's what this looks like it does.
Yeah.
So, from my perspective, I think it meets the recommendations that we had put forward at the last board meeting. So, thank you for the conversations.
And before we move on, Madam Chair, I just, I did think of something right now, because I, obviously, I just got this when I was in. In the last, the next to last condition in five, where you say, are any conditions approved by the board? It is determined by the board, are its agents, that the noise has been properly reasonably abated? It needs to be the board, not your agent. I think I need, we need to come back to you and have you determine as a board. Just my thought. I mean, you can leave it the way you want, but it's, it's in five, Roman at five at the bottom. Talk about if, if after construction, the sound wall, post-construction noise, testing pursuant to the protocol and Coats memo, are any conditions approved by the board, is determined by the board, you have arts agents, that the noise has been properly or reasonably abated? I mean, what if I caught Karina on a good day and she said, yeah, okay, it's
No, I think it, it may be referring to a third-party reviewer as well.
If, if we have a peer review, so.
So, it could, yeah.
I think your best to just leave it as just the board, because then you can determine what you want to do in your decision with the modification. Okay? I mean, that was just my thought, because I, I was confused myself.
Yeah. I mean, that seems to make sense to me. We can take the input from a, you know, from a peer review and then, but we would, what we would ultimately.
Yeah, you guys were making the decision, right.
Good call.
Hey, I just, I only had a few minutes to look at it.
So, we'll be removing the phrase that said, or, and then typo-quotes, it's a agent that. Or it's agent, right?
Just that, yeah.
Take that out.
Or it's agent, delete.
That's all I.
I have, I have a couple. Thank you very much. This, this one went very well, very, very comfortably. I just have a couple of things on the landscape. The, the plans still refer to New England plants, which isn't a company?
New England wetland, right, should be.
Right, yeah. So, I had mentioned that at the last.
Yeah.
Can you just repeat what it should state?
Just be New England wetland.
It should be New England wetland plants.
Okay. And that's on several sheets or just one?
And I noticed that you have a note that any changes in plans had to be approved by the Conservation Commission.
Well, the ones in their jurisdiction is.
So, do you want that it to be the Conservation Commission or the Conservation Agent?
Well, they can, they will, they, they generally delegate that kind of decision to, they make a decision whether they delegate it to Melissa.
Oh, okay.
It's so. They give her that, they give her that kind of power.
Okay. You're comfortable with that?
Yeah.
I am. Yes, otherwise we can't do it.
I'll let you sit next to Scott.
Yeah, we did also in this interim, we also had a, a good meeting with our wetland biologists and Freddie and Melissa to change the planting plan to incorporate many of the native stuff that had been suggested. I think we had a problem with putting the boy plants in the wrong place, but we can fix that in the field.
I, I can put the boy plants in the right place. The I was commenting just on this issue, which was, I thought, and maybe Karina knows, or if it's in your decision, that any changes would be collaboratively reviewed by the town planner in collaboration with the Open Space Commission and the CONCON, because this is a site plan of the planning board, not just the Conservation Commission. And throughout, in the notes on six, seven point one, under number two, it has that language. It's just the Conservation Commission and the It's just the Conservation Commission and the planning. You know, your coming, um, town planner, I'm sorry, I just lost the words. The town planner and with consultation with the Open Space Commission is what we had listed before. And as long as it's in the decision, I don't know that it's, unless you're changing this, are they making changes to the plan anyhow?
The, the purpose of that note that matters, fact is that in these areas where the specific mitigation was called out for the, by the Conservation Commission, and, um, that's where there really has to be ultimately a Conservation Commission decision on, on those elements. They're, they're going to be the final say on, on that within the buffer zones and such, so. Especially in those areas where it's wetland mitigation. Not that there won't be consultation as such, but ultimately it's their decision. Those aren't plans, for instance, that were planned, that were put on the plan for planning purposes or zoning purposes or primary for wetland mitigation buffer zone enhancement, refrigerant mitigation.
But weren't some of those part of the previous site plan? Under plan?
The bio, the bio retention was, was always part of a, a wetland mitigation plan with the commission. The only plantings that we had that were purely planning and nature with ones, we'd say around the front of the building, the upland areas, so. By way of no, no, that being said, no objection at all to, uh, the point that Freddie's made and suggestions she's made.
My question would just be, how is that documented? If it's not on the plan, was there a line in the decision? I haven't seen the most final decision. And I, while I'm just sitting at the table, I would say that we did have that meeting and I would was very pleasantly surprised at how much of our recommendations they incorporated into this. From the planting of the placement of the plants, um, being grouped together instead of spread out, um, and that's based on scientific research, why you do that, as well as the composition we went through, Dr. D. Gears list pretty extensively. And wetland scientists and Scott were able to add it in. We left with him saying he would give us, he would try to give 50% of those plants, and I said I was more of a 100% kind of gal. And I think we've gotten somewhere between, we've gotten a 60 to 80%, so, you know, more towards. So it was very good. I mean, we're very pleased with that.
Plant list was good.
It is good, and it's going to be a good, um, because of that.
Freddie, before you move on, I just want to confirm that, um, in the decision for both the major site plan approval and the lid, that, um, conditions nine, 10, um, 11, all related to, um, new plantings, disturbed or restored grasses, and uh, the meadow, all included, um, shall be approved. So, um, planting materials and substitutions, including substitutions for plants that die, will be approved by town planner, conservation agent, and with consultation with Open Space Preservation Commission, um, prior installation.
Thank you. I, I recall that was in the decision, so I was just surprised it wasn't on the plan, but it's in the decision, that's, I guess that's okay, good enough, but, um, it was just one other minor, but it's worth mentioning because when it's over, it's over. On page C5, in, in the middle, it says, bottom of a paragraph, it says, which says, establish 37,500 square feet. It says applicant will work with OSP Commission on public awareness program regarding native plantings. Now, that's nice that it's written here, but is there anything in the decision or is it, and is there any way we could say, you know, you meet with us once a year until it was established? Because what would that program be if we don't ever talk or we don't, like, does this just get filed and that's the end? I'm, I'm not sure. I want to be sure someone takes our call or that they call us if we're trying to do something here. And I don't know what it looks like, but we should have a conversation.
Well, I think it was something that we expected that we would work out with you and as time goes on, if we want to meet once a year and value, certainly in the first three years, there's going to be a lot of reporting on this, a lot of, uh, follow-up on the plantings.
And I just see that because it's written on this plan, it becomes an official part of this approval. Is there any more documentation? Like, what does that mean? We never, it's a great idea. And I'm, I'm happy that we're willing to work and just came about, but what does it really mean? We never really discussed that. It's like the, what is this, the 11th hour or the, more like the 50th hour?
It's been a lot of, a lot of goodwill, I think, and be, Ken's is, uh, in terms of some of the things they've been doing, changes and making, I think that the expectation is that we should meet with you at least once a year. I don't know if we need to, to create that and put that into, um, decision around the plans, yeah.
I just thought I'd bring it up because I'm happy it's here. I think it's a step in the right direction, and I think this whole plan, this landscape plan is a great opportunity. And as we said when we first met, when we were there, look, it's an opportunity for Ken's to do some, this, this is the way landscaping is moving, and you're ahead of the curve. And I mean, it's, these articles about what we're doing are in the New York Times. Um, you know, prestigious newspapers, magazines, all the time saying we've got to get that way. It's up there with climate change that we have to change our landscape, and you are ahead of the curve and part of the solution. And I like to collaborate and hopefully make that something we can all be proud of inside of it.
Well, I would think that making this as a matter is a, as a part of the meeting minutes for this hearing, saying that we commit to meet with you manually. Um, Ken's Foods means, commits to meet with you manually on this, on these topics, if you could.
Yeah, that's why I brought it up to be part of the minutes. So aside from that, we're, you know, these plans are great. Open Space Commission, we do, we had the opportunity to review the list, if not the plan, so thank you. Anybody else?
So based on that, are there any changes that the planning board wants on the plan, or was that acceptable? Um, that that's reflected in the discussion as far as any language?
Yeah, one scribbles there that this wetland word, I don't know what it seems to be avoiding us. Um, but I think that that's minor detail. We all know the company they're talking about.
Yeah, but is it, is it mis, is it mis, um, written on the plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just not, yeah.
So when you submit your final plan, the three copies or whatever is, uh, written in the decision?
Sure, yeah, that's right. We need to get, yeah, we'll get that in, yeah.
You could tweak that without changing the dates. Um, it's, you're just, you're just fixing kind of like a typo.
Yeah.
Kind of right with you, Mimi?
Sure.
Because we have to get two solid copies.
Yeah, there, there'll have to be two final sets that the planning board will endorse. So if there's any little minor tweaks, they should.
In having the, um, changes or substitutions be on, be in consultation with the town planner, in the OSPC, does that need to be on the plans if it's on the decision? I know we've had it on the plans before.
Um.
They did mention that at the last meeting.
Yeah, I believe, Scott, you were indicating that, uh, the particular note that you're calling out, is it in more than one spot or is it, um, specific?
It's in one, we'll just, we'll take, we'll make that change.
Okay.
As long as it, as long as we, it's clear that the commission, Conservation Commission is really the jurisdictional body in that area, in those areas. Thank you.
So you make those two changes?
That all the little plantings around it?
What was that, sorry?
Sorry, maybe I was.
I missed it, I missed it also.
We're talking about reviewed by the planning board.
Yeah. Town planner.
Town.
In consultation with OSPC.
In consultation with the OSPC.
That is, I found it at least at C6, C7.1, and several times where there's a note number two.
But this is the same language as in the decision.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? Ms. Nury?
It'd be Mary of 58, I was a member of the planning board, but speaking as, as a citizen. Um, our attorney couldn't make it here tonight, and I was just wondering if, um, it's possible that, um, and courtesy to the residents who are also concerned, myself and our attorney, if we'd be able to look at that copy before it's overdone. Condition 14, need to deal with noise.
So did your, your attorney saw the previous?
So the version, so we've been careful, um, in not looking at copies because, um, upon his advice, he's asked that he only received copies that are put into the public domain. So the version that I sent him, um, Phil Gett was the 16th, that was discussed at the May meeting. So, so the condition 14 was never put into the public domain. So he hasn't had the chance.
Well, it wa, it was, but not in this iteration. There was a condition 14 in the previous decision.
So the latest that I gave him, it was just yellow and it said to be filled in by town council.
Oh, okay.
There was a prior, there was prior to that, um, where we had, um, a complete, um, several paragraphs that, um, were included in condition 14. It wasn't until, um, town council agreed to, to, um, to, um, provide additional changes to that, that we then inserted the term, uh, to be drafted by town council, who is going to, rework it somewhat, but it was in one, it was in the decisions back, um, prior to, hold on, let me just tell you. So in the, so in the decision that was discussed, at the May 23rd, 2022, and then the June 6th also had, um, I believe, um, a copy of condition number 14. If you recall, it was in black print, blue print, red print, and then yellow highlighted. There was, um, and we can call them up on the screen too. There was, you know, parts III, III, triple I. And there was even language in there about a bond, which we since found was not, um, the way to go. So it wasn't until after, um, let me see here, the meeting we had, with town council on the 16th, um, to discuss an approach, uh, that town council said that he would, um, try and rewrite some of the parts of that condition number 14. So in order for him to be working with, um, the one that had updated dates and everything, I sent him a copy with a, one line that says, condition 14, um, by town council. It had just modified it back to one line, so he would have, um, understanding that's where the new language would go, or the revised language. I don't know if that clarifies it, but it was in there before. Um, it's just modified now. And he's on the screen as well, if that's, um, what the planning board would like to see.
I'm just looking for clarification, Karina. Was that put into the public domain? Are you saying that was released with the minutes?
It was, um, it was, oh, not, yes, I believe it was released with the minutes, and it was shown on the screen at the prior two meetings. It wasn't until after the June 6th meeting, um, that we, the planning board suggested that, um, we, um, that the chair and I meet with town council and attorney Pizoni, uh, the applicant's attorney, to formulate and come to terms on a consensus for an approach in order to get a concept plan written into the decision. Remember at the last meeting, um, attorney Pizoni had said, I do have a concept plan, um, and there was still question as to whether that would be built into the condition or not. And that's why we met, um, with town council and attorney Pizoni to go over, um, town council's recommendation that a concept plan at a level that the planning board could, uh, feel comfortable to move forward with action, uh, with enough information, that and along with the protocol for testing would be, um, incorporated more specifically into the condition and less generically, so that, um, it solidified the condition. Not just a plan would be, be proposed later, um, as part of a modification, but that this concept plan would provide the, um, a firmer stand on mitigation approach along with post, um, permitting conditions, uh, to make sure that that mitigation, uh, takes place and then is also vetted by the planning board through a modification. So, you know, it's kind of evolved to where we now have a condition that specifically states a concept plan with a date, uh, and then post permitting tasks based on the protocol that I believe was vetted at the Board of Health meeting on June 21st. With, um, the Butters and attorney Pizoni, it's my understanding, the applicant and the Board of Health at that point. Uh, I believe Mimi mentioned that previously, that the protocol of testing was, uh, something that was consensus on by all parties. Um, so those specifics were built into this feature, built into this condition.
Okay, thank you, thank you for clarifying. So then I just wanted to mention to the board, I put forward, um, some proposals that I was hoping that the board would, um, consider. And it's just based on my research of, um, you know, other, there's a lot of, um, you know, warehouse facilities, Amazon fulfillment centers popping up all around. So there's a lot of towns now that have really, um, very complete, um, conditions, um, in their, uh, major site plan approvals. And I found one that I thought, um, that I just wanted to mention. And it may be a thought for future project then, or won't, won't consider the, um, conditions, but um, there's a Amazon facility, uh, warehouse. I don't know if it's built yet actually, but it's a 4,400 computer drive in Westboro, and, um, it's an interesting, um, site because it's, um, you know, kind of around the same sort of location in terms of its proximity to Fruit 9 and Port 95, um, in the Mass Spike. Um, a pretty quiet neighborhood, um, ambient is pretty much the same as it is around our house. And, you know, I found that there, um, conditions to be very thoughtful to, um, incorporate any unforeseen, unforeseen changes that might happen in the future. Um, and these things do happen. Um, I strongly feel that that's, um, something that, you know, we've seen a lot of towns saying, I don't, I don't want the same, you know, conditions that Norwood had at their facility. We need more protection. We need more protection. So the one in Westboro I really thought was quite, um, detailed, and in addition to some of the same elements that are in the set of conditions, um, they put like the goals for sound reduction, for example, which I don't think are in, uh, these plans. And I think that would be a good idea. And actually, the, I think the two engineers are together on the sound reduction goals. That might be a good one. Um, and also, um, West, Westboro happens to have a condition that is, um, you know, whether the sound is audible a certain number of feet from the facility. And I just want to point out that my house is about 1,800 feet, 2,000 feet from the Ken's Foods facility, and we, we just shouldn't be hearing vibration 2,000 feet. And so maybe South Grove needs, uh, a zoning bylaw that says something like that, but I know that Westboro has it, and maybe that's the reason that it's in their conditions, but they also have sort of a cap on noise, you know, how much noise can there be 400 feet from, uh, the warehouse. So I just wanted to point out that, um, you know, this might be a fine condition. Um, you know, obviously, there's a plan in place, um, but there are other towns, I think, that are really coming up with a more comprehensive approach also to deal with any kinds of changes that might happen, whether the, uh, whether there's changes in the, um, project that, that might occur, um, for whatever reason. for whatever reason. We're very much interested in making sure that the noise is contained. And I just wanted to share that when I asked our sound engineer to come up with a plan, came up with a, a wall design that's different from David Coats' design. And I asked him, has he ever just used a wall like the one that David came up with? And he said, yes, but not in this design. And then the reason for that is that he feels that his design captures all of the noise, whether it comes from refrigeration, comes from, who knows? We've never really identified the noise of the site. So I anticipate that the engineers are going to get together on this and, and figure it out, but I just wanted to let you know that we're not agreeing right now on the the wall proposed by Ken's. Because we're afraid that if we don't put additional conditions to limit the, the trucks that might be cooling, pre-cooling, whatever, if they're not on the east side of the wall, we're going to hear it on the west side. So I just wanted to point that out to, to the board that we are thinking, I mean, that's the starting point, right? The idea is to come in, in the middle, but we've never agreed that the trucks are an island down there. And in fact, there's a police report from our neighbor who moved away from Plankworth Flag Road. And when he called the police, they broke up a report of truck island. So we know that it happens. It may be occasional, maybe it's just that night. But we're very afraid that if this enclosure doesn't enclose or capture mitigation for the whole site, that it's not really going to be, you know, as helpful as if there's more kind of a, like, traditional perimeter kind of wall that we're seeing around a lot of these warehouse facilities. Thank you.
Right, so just to be clear, Debbie, that the, the condition says that, you know, after the sound study, that Ken showed provided final design and plan for the sound barrier enclosure as approved by both experts and the board. So although that, this, that's the concept plan that is mentioned in this that, that we're not there yet, the two experts have to come up with what's the best solution. And I think that your attorney had mentioned that in his letter, that, that, you know, both experts need to work together. And I think that working with town council and attorney Pizoni, we were able to incorporate that into the condition.
Thank you.
And is, is Mark Wallace?
He, he was coming back a long weekend. He was going to try to dial in, but I don't know if he was.
Mark Wallace, engineer?
Yeah.
Yeah, he was at a family reunion this weekend.
Okay.
But he is back because he talked to.
Okay, maybe he was.
Are you stopping him?
No, I just, I'm well informed. And I'm interested in this biolog, she says, the Westboro has, because my son sits on that planning board. I want to see what it's about.
Thanks, Bill, I noticed that.
Yeah, okay, so now that we have agreed to fourteen, I have not seen a revised draft decision. Is that correct? So we have nothing really. I mean, I know we've reviewed a lot of the points, but we don't have a document. And at least my experience from something many years ago, I do, I want to make sure that we go through to make sure that everything in the draft decision is what we have all agreed to.
We all agreed to this one here that we went through the other night. The only thing we had to agree on was paragraph fourteen, which is in front of you now. So if you guys are okay with paragraph fourteen, Karina inserts that in here and we've got a final document.
I would also just like to point out that I will still also have to just update the dates of the final plan. And then in the document list, which is not unusual at this stage, I would add some, there were some additional documents received as far as information from Thea Butters, the draft from town council, those get added to the list as the others were listed there in order.
To that point, Karina, we do not, as a planning board, have a document to review. I'm uncomfortable approving something that I have not seen actually in totality. I do not want that coming back to bite us. So I need to see that totality of, of what was written. I don't know, we do it. How we propose to do that, what will it show?
Would you like me to try and, and we could do that now and insert it into a document, but there would still be small things like adding the maybe three or four documents that were, were received, but I could take the current decision and put the draft fourteen into it. But that's, you know, up to the planning board to decide if they want to review it this evening.
Question to the chair again. So could we, if we did approve it, can we make the caveat subject to final read through or something in a verbal agreement that will approve it, but it is subject to making sure there are no errors on the, the document?
What other boards do is you approve it, subject to the final form being put in front of you all and then the chair signing.
Okay. As long as there is a way for us to, to review it, I just.
Who was posing the public hearing to vote?
So this shouldn't be any more discussions with the applicant. It should just be amongst the board.
Yeah, 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 there's no more feedback.
Yeah.
And I can say that in the past, we have done that when it still had to go to town council for review. In this case, it went to town council ahead of time. So in the past, we would say, the planning board might say approved with contingent upon any changes from town council. If they were minor, I know that it's worked both ways like that, so. But that's the planning board's decision to make. They're comfortable.
So that was my one question. And then I just wanted to make a comment to Ken's. This submission, the clarity, the plantings, it was awesome. Like, it really was clear. I, I could really, it was very, your changes in the recommendations made it really easy for me to review and understand it. So I just want to say thank you for countless hours of your time to be able to label all those little plants, but it's most appreciated. Thank you.
Won't be too hard on my guys about the word.
Yes, and thank you for having the, the detention, buyer retention area all on one.
Sure.
Plan.
Should have been that way.
It was bending my mind trying to figure out what the two.
Understood, thank you.
So are we comfortable with that to close the public hearing and approve pending the, the final review of the decision?
Yeah, I, I just want to know, Karina, when I make the motion for what we're going to approve, what plan am I saying? Am I saying the plan that was last revised on March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two? Which I see on the cover page here, because there's a lot of different dates on each one of these.
I think it's been consistent, it's been, Karina's been consistent.
The most, the most current plan set. And I, I don't think Scott should change the date on all the sheets. I, I will check to make sure that.
Revision is due to twenty, okay.
Something's up on the block, it's in there. Got it right.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure that you have that reference on date. June twentieth.
The, the survey plans have a different date, that's referenced in the decision.
Yeah, this is.
And the, and the repair plan has got a different date also, and that's in the decision also.
Yes, and in reference to the decision fourteen, a condition fourteen in the decision, the sound wall conceptual location plan dated five twenty-three, twenty-two is the correct date. And please note that the plan is also stamped. So in condition fourteen, there's a reference to the conceptual sound wall. The sound wall conceptual location that was provided to move the process forward, that is the correct date in the condition number fourteen. And it coincides with the plan that was also stamped by Scott Doty as a, as a submittal as part of this permit. Sorry, I'm looking at the plan, I'm zooming in my head too. Okay. Is, does that answer your question, Andrew?
Yep.
So first, we have a motion to close the hearing.
Yeah. So we'll ask one more time, one more question.
Any more questions, comments? Anyone in the audience? Want to raise their hands?
Chair, I make a motion that we close the public hearing for three twenty-five Turnpike Road, Ken's Food Expansion Major Site Plan Approval.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor, Latrell, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
And Madam Chair, I make a motion that we close the public hearing for three twenty-five Turnpike Road, Ken's Food Expansion Special Permit for LID.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor, Latrell, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
With hand, yes.
So, Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve three twenty-five Turnpike Road, Ken's Food Expansion Major Site Plan Approval for the revisions from six twenty, twenty twenty-two with conditions discussed both tonight and prior meeting, specifically ensuring condition fourteen is included with reference to site that Stanwell Concept, Conceptual Location Plan dated three, five twenty-three, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Okay, and is that contingent on the review of the final?
Review of the final decision by the board and signed up by the chair, chairman.
Okay.
The chair.
Any more discussion?
Try me, PC.
Will that decision be forward, for the next meeting for the planning board? Or is that something you want me to circulate prior to the next meeting? In other words, the contingent for that motion will be that I'll update the decision and send it to the planning board members. And if you're all set, Mimi can sign it, if there are no, if there's no feedback of problems.
Yes. Right motion and a second, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
With hand, yes.
And Madam Chair, I make a motion, we approve three twenty-five Turnpike Road, Ken's Food Expansion Special Permit for LID with conditions discussed both this evening and in a prior meeting for final approval by the chair and the board before, by the meeting or before our next meeting.
Is there a second? Okay, we have a motion, second, any discussion? All in favor, Latrell, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
With hand, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Scott, you'll be getting me a couple sets of those final plans.
Right, individually, they won't be, they won't be bound. Right, so they can be easily signed and then we can, right?
Right, because we'll have to, you'll have to scan them and send me a PDF and just check the new site plan one seventy-four dash ten requirements.
I'll be in touch with you and Colleen on that, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Right.
All right, next up, two hundred Turnpike Road, Karina?
Uh, so for two hundred Turnpike Road, the applicant requested continuation. We received an email to respectfully request a continuance to the next meeting of the planning board on Monday, July eleventh. I checked with the Conservation Commission and they continued there as well. So it's my understanding that he's steadily moving forward, albeit on a slow pace, but they, again, they are in front of conservation as well now. So we'll be on them press them to get. So we need a, a motion to continue. They're all set for an extension until Ju- July.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we continue the public hearing for two hundred Turnpike Road, Snow Removal Landscaping Contractor Facility Major Site Plan Approval for July eleventh at seven P M.
Is there a second?
Yep, second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, Latrell, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
With hand, yes.
And Madam Chair, I make a motion that we continue the public hearing for two hundred Turnpike Road, Snow Removal Landscaping Contractor Facility Special Permit for LID for July eleventh at seven o'clock P M.
Did you say seven oh five?
No, seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, yeah, got it.
Second.
So motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, Latrell, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
With hand, yes.
Quick question, is, is Mr., is Mr. Mira still recused?
Yes, from these two.
Thanks.
Okay, next up, A and R two fifty-nine Turnpike Road.
Yes, so would you like me to get you up to date on that?
Do you want to take a two-minute break?
Are you asking me, Mimi?
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Karina.
No, I said, are you asking me if we need a two-minute break? Okay, I didn't think so, just joking. Okay, two fifty-nine Turnpike. Originally, Verujan Hagopian, the engineer from Coniston Engineering, was going to attend, but he is out of town. And I don't know if, Colleen, are you able to share the screen? Or I'll just open it on my end and look at it.
You're sharing, I just don't know if you can see it, can you see it?
Can you see it?
Oh, is it on the screen behind you? I'll, I'll just pull it up on my end here independently, so you see it on your screen. You'll, you look at, are you looking, I'll open mine. So, um, we received an application and filed it with the town clerk on June fifteenth for an A and R at two fifty-nine Turnpike. That A and R, unfortunately, when I asked Bill De Petri, who is the applicant of this, he did not have anyone available. He said he's short-staffed to attend this evening, so I said, it's best if you do attend to answer any questions. But we would move forward and if there was any concerns, it could always be pushed to July eleventh. So we filed the application. They filed the application, we filed it with the town clerk. We, Colleen and I both vetted the plan. They made several revisions, including adding underground and surface features that are required to be shown according to town code, one of them being a land bank area of parking spaces that's associated with the existing office condo building, which you see is on the right side. So they have one parcel there that is on the corner of Deerfoot Road and Turnpike Road. And they're going to split it into two. On the right-hand side is the existing building, which consists of a condo trust with two condos, one owned by Bill De Petri and one condo owned by Brendan Giblin. uh condo owned by uh Brendan Giblin. And uh I made sure that Giblin Properties was aware that this A and I was taking place, they confirmed it with an email to me. The project shares parking with um the property to the right as well. However, the new property line that they're creating um kind of diagonally and then perpendicular to Turnpike Road, it appears it won't be impacting land bank parking that's located on the left side of the building. They're showing the wetlands, I believe it's their intent that the left side um lot that's created on Deerfoot Road will be um is proposed to be a residential a, a home, a house, a single-family house, and therefore, if you look at the plan, um there's a zoning table not only for um business highway, but they've indicated for residence B because it is their intent to put a house there, so they were showing um when you're in a business highway and you build residential, it defaults to residential B um dimensional requirements. You'll notice I also had them put scenic road on Deerfoot Road. Um there is stone wall along Deerfoot Road, and if that's impacted, they'll need to come back to um the planning board for scenic wall uh removal permit, uh if it's on town right away. So that's pretty much the gist of it. So that's it, Mimi.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Yes. So my question is this, so scenic road frontage, the majority of the frontage is the stone wall. So while it conforms to zoning requirements, if lot one were to be developed, its use is limited to residential, as you just said, and the stone wall removal requirement would be subject to a scenic road public meeting, so there's no guarantee that we would agree to remove the stone wall for a residence, is they, are they aware of that? Right, like, I think it's subject to a public meeting, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Yes, and it's similar to others that we've had. Uh for example, Granuel Road, where there were several lots created, and they know that, you know, they may not build that lot right away, it does have frontage on a way. Um but if they were to come back, they have additional permitting, just like they would have to with um conservation.
Okay, and was there a question of whether the stone wall was actually within the right-of-way, or if it's within their property? So I know it's older plans of this property that the right-of-way, that the stone wall is not in the right-of-way.
Well, initially, when they had submitted the A and R, they didn't show the stone wall all the way up the side. So we researched back on some of the other plans, I believe, and we saw that there was a stone wall, so we asked Connor Stone to confirm, was there, was there not a stone wall? And as you know, um the stone wall symbol is larger than what the real-life wall sometimes shows, so uh when the time comes, if they do proceed to want to build there, and they are proposing a driveway off Deerfoot, then um if they claim that the stone wall is not on town property, we have their surveyor provide a stamped letter confirming that it isn't, attesting to that, and that goes in the file. Um but usually at the time, uh they'll have to confirm if it's on town property or not. And we get that through the building permits off there.
All right, so the, so a building permit won't be issued until um there's a scenic road, stone wall hearing, if needed.
Right, right, and, and for the most part, and I can't say it's a hundred percent, but we pick those up when they come through with a building permit, because um the building department includes planning when there's a, a new single-family house being built. So then we can see if it's scenic or not, and then we type in that you need to come to planning board for a scenic road, stone wall removal, or tree.
And then my other question is just around the, the, the arrows, like the, the tri, the colored-in triangle dashes, is that all conservation land?
What?
Oh, wetlands. So is there enough of the lot that is buildable? That doesn't impede on wetlands?
So it appears they have thirty-six thousand eight hundred and fifteen square feet of upland.
Um, what are our requirements? It's eighty percent. It is eighty percent.
Hold on a second. And you need, um I'd have to look at the to- town code. In the definition of one seventy-four, let me just look at, at it real quick, what the requirement is, because I don't know it off the top of my head. Let me just get to it real quickly, and I'll tell you. I'm just gonna go to the town code. And go to one seventy-four dash two.
Would be seventy-five percent.
Is that what it says?
You do the math of thirty-six, eight, fifteen divided by forty-eight, nine, twenty-three, that's seventy-five percent.
Yeah, okay. And then if we go to, um just bear with me, I just don't have it off the top of my head.
Which is happening.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to find it.
Yeah, I'm sorry to put you on the side.
No, you're not, I just, I, I can't always remember where it is. Um. Uh, I don't think it's under open space, let me see here. Is it under buildable lot, let me see here. Just bear with me. Butter of buttering. Customer home, just bear with me, let me see if I can find, I know I've seen it in here, in the definitions, and just can't find it off the top of my head.
Here it says minimum lot area is twenty-five thousand square feet with a minimum of twenty thousand square feet exclusively wetlands.
Oh, where do you see that, Colleen?
From the resident B district.
Yes. It's under resident B, let me see that.
D one. So minimum, so it meets the minimum.
Just making. That's a very good question.
It doesn't count with an A and R. If it's buildable or not.
Right.
I just wanted.
That's where it is, that's great, Colleen, thank you.
Well, yeah, well, because then we can flag it with the uh buildings. Any other questions, Jesse? Any questions?
I am very grateful for the uh thorough work and presentation by our town planner. Thank you for.
Thank you, and finding by Colleen.
And Colleen, of course.
It's a great, a great question from the planning board, Marnie.
Madam Chair, I make a motion, we approve uh the A and R, as requested by the applicant for uh, or sorry, endorse the A and R. As requested by the applicant for five, two fifty-nine Turnpike Road.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, Latrell, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
The hand, yes.
Demirian, yes. Very good. Discussion item on the agenda, one fifty-four Turnpike Road, site compliance, scenic road tree removal. Do you want to update this, Karina?
Yes, absolutely, so um at the last planning board meeting, um the plan was for me to reach out to um Capital Group Properties, Bill De Petri, and um find out what was going on there. I took a drive by the site, it might have been even before the last meeting, and took several pictures where landscaping was missing. The driveway access between one fifty-four and one forty-four was blocked, but it appeared that those Jersey barriers were relatively easy to move, because they were in a different position from when I had seen them last time. Um there's a fence supposed to be along this, the um southern perimeter. Um I think a six-foot-high vinyl tan fence was conditioned. Um so I put together an email um and identified those items, including, I'll get it right here. Uh the current removal of landscaping, um landscaping that was removed in order to make the non-compliant driveway connection was not put back. Um a six-foot-tall PVC fence, earth tone, is required to be installed along the southern perimeter. There were changes to the light fixtures, uh when I went out there, it appeared that the previous lights were like carriage lights, kind of open, the new light fixtures, and, and there were still a couple of the old ones, are LED fixtures that um point down. Um I'm not sure they're necessarily shielded all the way around, but they're pointing down towards the ground on the same post that was there. So um in seeing those things and looking at the um approved site plan, um on June thirteenth, I sent Bill De Petri um an email, and he responded back um with various reasons that, you know, he was in the works of revamping the landscaping and putting um ordering new landscaping to put back there. We are um re-landscaping due to traffic safety site issues, new trees are on order due within two to three weeks. Um as far as um the landscaping where the, uh, non-compliant driveway was, um he thought, it was news to him, we were asked to put the grass back and add Jersey barriers, and that was supposed to be a temporary fix until the springtime um in two thousand nineteen, I believe it was. Um as far as the six-foot-tall fence, um Bill indicated that um during the walkthrough with the building commissioner back then, that during the certificate of occupancy, um it was agreed to place the fence at the corner of the entrance. I indicated that he would need to show some kind of evidence of that agreement. Some kind of documentation to prove that was the case. Um as far as the change to lights, um again, he felt that um the LED fixtures uh were more energy efficient, and I said, well, they have to still comply with outdoor illumination. Uh if they're applicable to the threshold, and um also, there is a, a, um paragraph in the outdoor illumination about existing outdoor illumination, if you're changing the fixtures. That, you know, um if you don't change anything, they're still compliant, but if you change things, they have to become compliant. And then um there is the concern with the removal of the public shade tree on Break Neck Hill Road driveway access. As you pull out of White's Corner onto Break Neck Hill Road, on the right, there was a public shade tree, um which appeared to be pretty large. I think there's pictures of it before and after. But that was removed, so in my email, I asked him um for his availability for the July eleventh planning board meeting to come and discuss and explain the status. In addition, you asked me to draft a letter, uh which I'm working on, I haven't got there yet, um it's been pretty busy three weeks, and with breaking my leg, it's really set me back a little bit time-wise, everything takes three times longer, but um I'll get that letter drafted and prepared prior to the next meeting. And it's a letter that is going to be from the planning board to the building commissioner, identifying uh what was described in my email as some of these things that are non-compliant. If you see any other non-compliance there, uh let me know during the week, and I'll add that to the letter as well. Um and then I'll circulate that with the planning board members uh before uh the next meeting, and then if it's acceptable, um you know, Mimi can sign it, or I'll sign it, and we'll send it to the building commissioner.
But was part of the site plan, having the bushes all in front of like, oh, uh.
Oh, yeah.
Those were all removed as well.
Yes, yeah, is, there's several pictures of vegetation before and after, I think.
So all of these.
So they still have the outdoor dining there, which was re-licensed recently. But outside of that. So if you have any questions on that, let me know, but I'll be drafting that uh hopefully sometime this week, getting it out to the planning board members to take a look at if anything's missing, or if you have additional comments. And um again, at the time when I was asking Bill De Petri about having someone here tonight for the A and R, um he said that he, he couldn't have someone here for one, for the, this topic as well. Um so I reminded him that, you know, I had asked originally for him to please be prepared, maybe to attend the July eleventh meeting, to speak to these items.
Did you get a response on that?
Not yet. Not yet. I think I emailed that Friday or this morning.
It, just to be clear, when he was here for the modification prior, when the um one forty-four was the.
Non-compliant driveway, yeah.
For that, uh his site manager or construction manager, permit manager, who was here on his behest, agreed, after speaking with him on the phone here while he was at the meeting, to put the landscaping back as per the approved site plan and to install that fence as per the approved site plan.
That was reflected in the planning board meeting minutes of June third, two thousand nineteen, which I put up on the.
The public shade tree um was evaluated by an arborist in November of two thousand twenty-one and deemed to be in good condition. If you go on Google Earth and do the little street view from two thousand nineteen, you can see it was a big.
So we'll have to. Yeah, so we'll have to follow up on um the mitigation for removal of a public shade tree like that. And how the planning board wants to handle that. If he gets called for a public, you know, it's requested that he submit an after-the-fact permit. Which I have seen in the past in order for some form of mitigation for the tree that was removed. We could request perhaps, and we can always check with town council, that he submit a scenic, uh scenic road public shade tree removal permit, uh application to the planning board. So I think that uh if he attends on July eleventh, and we can write a letter or uh something stronger that says, we request your attendance at July eleventh, as opposed to me asking, are you available? I can do that as well. The planning board is requesting your attendance on July eleventh to speak to these. And then, um, you know, take the next step to let him know what's going to happen.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
You know what I mean, then it's more formal, the planning board is requesting your presence.
That's, sounds good to me, Jesse?
Sorry about that, yes, I have an agreement, thank you.
Okay.
And it's not to forget that the letter still has to be drafted to go to the building commissioner, um that's worked, that's in the works.
Yeah. Moving on. School Street Stone Wall.
Maybe I'll jump in, back there, Madam Chair. Yep, um. I think this is a good lesson about um our, why we have scenic um roads in town and protections of our stone walls. So um and also, sometimes you don't know what you have until it's gone. So this was a story that was, you know, first, we started, we became aware, picked up amongst ourselves of a change to the stone wall on School Street at the intersection of Main Street. And it was, the story was that it's being reduced to increase the sightlines. Um, and it was, the story was it was being reduced to increase the sightlines. Um, but there's sort of a a longer story than that. There had been a a small historic stone wall on School Street. Um, and just for those who might be listening, if there's a stone wall at an intersection with a scenic road and a non-scenic road, it's considered a scenic. You know, it's a it's a scenic road or it's a uh it's protected under um scenic roads. Um, but it was removed evidently as part of maybe complete streets or part of the the project, Main Street project. Right? And at that time, um, really what should have happened is um, there should have been a plan to come to the planning board to discuss between the wall and maybe um, you know, an equivalent that would look nice uh nearby. And in my mind, it's unclear whether the wall was put back in the same location or actually moved.
Debbie, are you talking about stone wall that is along Main Street where the cannon is?
Uh, no.
No, that's not that area. Okay, because I know that stone wall was
The old post office used to be.
Okay, across from Lata Squama.
Okay.
So what's a pretty, yeah, what year is this map actually that you're showing? So it was sort of on the corner, protected because it was also on School Street, which is a um a scenic road. So as part of the road project, it was removed. And um I'm not sure if it was relocated or whether a different wall was put back in that location. And um the the wall that was then constructed was put in, it was uh kind of sort of um took it took the turn from School Street um onto Main Street. And it was, it was very high. It was much higher than the old historic, you know, stone walls, which some of them are so low to the ground, they're very small. So um the story that was picked up on the blog was then that that stone wall was further reduced because now it was built too high. And and in my opinion, it looks like one of those walls that you get like from a Hanaford supermarket. You know, it's just everywhere kind of wall, sort of a nice wall, but it really doesn't fit our historic downtown. Um, so this is second flight of the apple. They should have come back to the planning board to then discuss any part of removal of the wall. And I just wanted to read um, let's see if I have it. Um, this is section fifteen C of chapter forty. After a road has been designated as a scenic road, any repair, maintenance, reconstruction or paving work done with respect thereto shall not involve or include the cutting or removal of trees or the tearing down or destruction of stone walls or portions thereof, uh except with the prior written consent of the planning board. So I just wanted to, you know, bring this to everybody's attention because this is two times the town failed to come to the planning board. And um this is kind of an interesting example because they took down a wall that was too small. They built a wall that was too big and then they had to remove part of it. So now we have some wall that is maybe not something that is fits the character of the town. Um, and had they come to the planning board to begin with, you know, I think that we could have helped them in designing, or at least first find out why they removed the wall to begin with. Maybe it was moved, unclear. Um, but uh, you know, this, I think, basically describes why we need scenic road protections for our stone walls. And it's just a reminder um to the public that our stone walls are for public enjoyment. Um, we don't want our downtown to look like Hanafords, I don't think. And um, you know, we all are in this together. And this is maybe why we need um protections of our our scenic roads, not just for the trees, but also for the stone walls. Um, and I just wanted to, you know, bring this um to others. I mean, uh, Mr. Morris has mentioned some of the wall projects that have come before planning board um in the past and actually I think in an example that he had given, um, he was a homeowner but hadn't planned on replacing their stone wall. They just took it down. So here we have a replacement, but it wasn't a good replacement. It had to be further taken down. It's really a second violation. Um, and I I don't know whether, you know, I'm not suggesting that we need to do anything. Um, maybe we should look at it and see if it's with now, is it perfect now? Because they've worked on this thing several times and at a cost to the town because they built it now twice and had to move it. Um, but uh, you know, this is where we need the protections and why we need the protections.
I can't speak to the Main Street project. Did they ever come before the planning board during that?
Um, it was prior to our attention and the commitment was to restore the walls, but specifically the the cannon.
Yeah.
Say. Talk about not a lot, especially.
So that so that may have come.
Because, yeah, because that have we had to, they had to dig a little bit into.
Yeah, also note that might be part of a state numbered route there, if that's town or state jurisdiction part of Main Street because numbered routes um unless they start and end within the town are uh not scenic roads, cannot be designated scenic.
I mean, this falls on School Street.
Definitely on School Street.
Okay, I'm talking about Main Street, the prior one, part of the tip project.
The tip project actually went over there because that's where the crosswalk went. I think the crosswalk is actually past the um
Yeah, it goes to Park Street. Didn't the tip go to Park Street?
Yeah, it went all the way down. But that, I think that the crosswalk, I don't know if you can see it well picture enough. Pretty sure it's past.
I think it's before.
Oh, is it?
It is. If you're blocking the end then.
I know. I know.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
But that whole thing was done, that wall was done.
So so even if it's like a checkered project, um, it's a scenic road, they still should have come to the planning board.
Yeah.
They should have.
And they
Follow. And use
Yeah. But even when they this time tearing down a destruction, it's a stone wall.
Yes, but that's correct. The the by the law doesn't say that it needs to be historic stone wall. So then when you erect a stone wall, the bylaw still applies, even though with fairly new wall, they should have still come back.
Yeah.
Now it's not like a cutout of it to increase.
Evidently, it's not done because nasty O T has to come to ask them.
So just to be clear, you're talking of the about the wall at the intersection of Main Street and School Street?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where the new lights were put in because I can't see the mapping behind you. And I wasn't really sure where you were talking.
It's on the side, though, of the old post office, which is now the building that houses like offices.
So sure. At the intersection.
Should we notify the DPW and the select board that it's a scenic road and that they should have discussed that with the plan?
I think we should uh we should have a process moving forward that when we do see things like this, we do document them and have been writing about the they 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 didn't follow the law.
Right.
Yes. So I would agree that we put a letter together. I I think what's very striking is that there's only really one law to follow. It's the same one for trees that it is for stone walls. So it's really not hard. So make it pretty easy. If you learn one, then you understand that the other flies. Right to it. So we should, you know, not only just document it, I think that's a very good idea, Marty. Um, but I think we should start thinking about what else can we do? Yeah, remediation, replacement, um, you know, um, we'll have a guest lecturer coming next month. Arborist to talk to us. Um, and uh she can perhaps answer some questions about fines versus fees. You know, I don't, I personally don't know that we have to have a bylaw in order to impose make sure I have it right. Fees, fines are under law, certain dollar amount per tree, but many towns adopt them. Fee. You know, how many dollars, you know, what is the replacement of that tree? It's larger than eight inches. You can't really buy it at a nursery, a twelve-inch tree, a a two-foot diameter, three, four, what is what is the value of that? So towns come up with other um fees in addition to fines. And so I have a question in my mind and for the arborist, do we do we have to have a bylaw in order to have fees? There's fees on other things that don't have bylaws.
Hopefully we'll have a bylaw.
Yeah. Yeah.
But which has fees and
Fees and fees, yeah.
So do you have any comment on this issue, um, Mr. Stone?
Uh, I do not. Um, it seems like we do not have any other public hearings on the agenda this evening. So uh, at this point, I'm going to uh sign off and bid everyone a wonderful evening. Uh, and I'm sure that Karina or Mimi can reach out to me uh if if anything comes up that I need to be uh praised of. Thank you.
Thank you. So Karina, could we do a um a letter to uh you superintendent and CC the select board just to make them aware that um scenic roads, destruction of stone walls needs to come before the planning board?
Yes. And I will, um, Colleen, maybe you can precisely show me that portion of the stone wall you're talking about on School Street. Because I know, I think I know what you're talking about, but it's not all four corners of the intersection. And I'm not sure where, because I thought the old post office was closer to um Newton Ave down at that end. When when Andy Andrew is saying the old post office. Do you have a
It's right across, it's right across School Street from that little strip mall thing.
It used to be Kidsborough.
It's just up from the nail place.
It's out of there.
You know, the old bank, you know, the pizza place, the nail salon.
Yeah.
Go further west up the hill, there's a little brick building.
Yeah.
Right there. That's the old post office.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I'll take a drive.
Like Kidsborough was there for at least ten, ten years. Yeah.
Towards the townhouse. In other words, past the place, you know, yeah, I'm in that direction, but not as far as the gazebo by the police department, by the old.
No, no, no.
Just through the downtown. Got it.
Yeah, it's School Street on one side and Lata Squama on the other.
Okay, got it.
Straight in the middle.
All right. Okay.
In the next item on the agenda, another discussion item is the national grid. Vegetation management and tree removal.
So I can speak about this one.
Okay.
Um, I received three applications for um vegetation management, national grid. And we looked into it a little further and they are required to have public hearings for these scenic roads, just like everybody else. Um, so we sent them an email and they, National Grid, the gentleman I was talking with was David Donhill. And he was going to look into his department and see if he had somebody that could help him because he's never done a public hearing before for these. And back out to him to find out where we stood, he sent me an email, which I sent to you guys today. Um, and with his uh his lawyers ideas about it. So Karina and I talked about it a little bit earlier and we were kind of thinking that maybe the planning board would want to um send this to town council. But I cannot you know what, I may not have think the whole thing I have it somewhere else.
So um I guess that's the question, where do we go from here? Although although their applications say trimming of trees, their um line clearance specification says these specifications cover the cutting, clearing, pruning, tree removal and herbicide treatment of vegetation along overhead electrical distribution lines in the corresponding substations.
That was everything.
Yeah, you do whatever they want. So they say trimming, but it's, it can be anything.
Just the vegetation management, thank you. And you know what those trees look like?
Yeah.
Holes in them.
Or they can cut them down. Which, that's definitely a
I did hear, um, you know, they do know ahead of time, um, years ahead of time, what their maintenance plan is.
Right.
So, you know, I was trying to talk a day before that, we were just chatting on the phone, saying, well, you know, you have a plan to go follow for next year, so why don't we see next year's this year? And we could try to get into a habit of that. He was all gung ho until he talked to his, you know, I got this last um email back from them. And if they really didn't feel they had to do it.
So according to chapter eighty-seven, the tree warden made um if he does, the utility shall provide an annual maintenance. And if that annual maintenance plan or is um approved, then they are not subject to these hearings. But we do not have an approved annual maintenance plan.
Is there any reason we can't ask the tree warden to begin requesting an annual tree plan?
I mean, if we could sort of get ahead of
It's in the tree bylaw. You gotta hit that.
Trying to dig out a little bit here. Um, I mean, I agree with you, maybe I was sort of surprised to see this letter. Um, I have been to a lot of different towns. Um, and I know that there is some language in towns that have tree bylaws, such as the one that, you know, that the planning board barely prepared. Um, where, you know, uh, utility companies have to come before the planning board like everybody else. And so I question whether, you know, this is in response to the fact that we don't have a tree bylaw that has this specifically in it or, um, you know, how we can then be yeah, I I think, I don't know if there's a weakness there, I guess, but um I feel that um it's pretty clear from that's your law that um, you know, they they need to come before the planning board like everybody else before any maintenance. And none of this is hazard. This is, as as Colleen says, this, we know this years in advance, they know now what they want to do next year. So this is, I think, just putting a stake in the ground and saying, we would like to know what you're going to do for our trees before you do it and then come and
Right. Well, I think that the their attorney has a narrow definition of what comes before the planning board on scenic roads and what they define as uh repair, maintenance and reconstruction of pavement. And uh, you know, Karina and I were talking and I consider and I thought, I think she agrees that they're working in the right of way of the road. That's maintenance. Trimming trees in the right of way is is road maintenance. The right of way is part of the the road. So do we want to ask town council to that or their attorney?
I agree.
And right now, the tree warden was left for. Yes. So if we could maybe also along with that, ask the select board to reach out to them to get a year of anything. Invite us to match them together or whatever they want to do with it.
Well, it should be consolidated, right? Because they have to come to the planning board for the scenic roads anyway.
No, but um, what Mimi just said, they have an approved plan.
But I think the approved plan had to have been in a while ago.
So when you look at the, the applications, they have the roads and stuff. So I think at this point, I don't think I'm misspeaking by saying, I think Karen gets the plan. And goes from there because Karen, Karen was the one that brought Karen over to give me the applications. So I think that was just because of what's been going on.
So can I just ask some clarification on the annual tree plan? The preferred way forward is for the tree warden to request the annual tree on national grid. And then who makes the decision on that?
Which is the plant group selection.
Okay.
But it does not, okay, that's not in sync, correct? It doesn't come to the planning board if it's the annual plan?
No.
Okay.
Now, and Debbie, I don't know if you're familiar, you know, with chapter 40, section 14 is the one that relates to utilities. If you had referenced that, it's in the Dropbox. We put, you know, the several sections there, but in that section, it, it does talk about a utility mayor at the request of the tree warden shall submit an annual hazard tree removal plan. So there is description there, you know, a utility mayor at request of tree wood shall submit an annual vegetation management, management plan. So it's either way, either way, they can, they can submit it or the tree warden can request it.
But if the tree warden requests it, they have to submit it. But it has to be submitted no less than 90 days prior to the date the utility proposes to begin its maintenance work.
Right.
I think, I think you would set up on the town website as well, all the locations that have been, either put up the plan for the public to see. Right. So when somebody comes down the road, they know that the town is aware.
In the, in the tree bylaw, I don't know if I've mentioned that before.
That, that one?
It will, it will, it's going, it will require a public hearing to, to get the maintenance plan and the hazard tree removal plan.
So do we want to ask town council to opine on National Grid's email or actually respond to them? Attorney to attorney?
Fight with the attorney or work with them and try and get them in.
You know, we could wait for town council's feedback and then we could convey that information and say, you know, town council opine. We, we checked with our town council and he believes X, Y, Z, because we have to see what he says first.
My, my concern is like, if we don't, they're going to start doing this pretty quick, right? And if they think that their position is, we can do whatever we want, we, we should work with town council, whatever the quickest way is to either get them and say, hey, you can't, because, you know, we've talked about this a lot in recent years or recent months. And I hate for this to come through, my, oh, the planning board can do anything, just let the power company do what they want. I'd be in favor of whatever the fastest resolution would be with town council to say, look, our position is they should be coming before hearing or giving us the plan so we can review it, know what they're going to do. And stop them before, you know, if we're right, stop them before they start doing it. That's what I would say. Because otherwise, it's going to come back to us. We're going to send out a letter. They're going to go forward and.
It's going to be three weeks between the rules.
Right. And then half the stuff is already going to be done. And like, oh, sorry.
All right, all right. I'm in agreement with that. You got that, Karina?
Got it. Colleen, you got that too, right? Confirming that.
Okay, that, but it's also submit a plan for next year. So it's yes, let's resolve this year, but let's get on the path.
That's exactly where I am. I'm like, I don't want to do this again.
Right.
Well, so I think that that we could send a letter to the select board and ask them to request a plan from the utility of hazardous tree maintenance plan and a maintenance plan or whatever they're called.
I think the.
Hazardous tree removal plan and annual vegetation management.
Yeah, I just want to make a plug for, you know, when we get these plans, it's really important to have people look at them. For not to get called by arborists, you can kind of decipher some of this stuff, because it will be public and us and others that are, are looking at it. But I think we would be real great to get ahead of it first.
Very good. Next, whoo, tree protection bylaw on scenic roads. So the, at the last hearing, we talked about the, how difficult it is to determine the right of way. And I had, I reached out to Sam Stivers, who's on the
Select Board?
MWRA Advisory Board and the Select Board.
He's online. Being flipped, but he's on the line.
But the.
He's not here.
He was, he was.
He's online?
He was online.
But the MR, MWRA Advisory Board has a lot of DPW supervisors on the board. And a lot of towns, that is who are tree wardens or it's under the DPW. So I asked him if he could reach out to them and ask them how they determine right of way. And I guess it's kind of the same thing. It's on a case by case basis. You look at stone walls, where the telephone poles are, fire hydrants, that type of thing. And try and if it's close, the tie goes to it's a public shade tree and the homeowner has to prove that it's not. So. I guess that's, and on newer roads where there are, you know, subdivision plans, we can tell pretty easily. It's the older, older ones that it's more difficult. So that, that's not unique to South Carolina. That's a, that's just the way it is. Yeah, so the select board are the tree wardens and they have designated legal to be business, may written to some. And I'm still working with Lisa. I run away, she went right, to put some type of a policy in place. Ahead of the, or the bylaw passage. I hope to start going around to other boards and committees to try and get by.
I'm going to ask a question. Do you need to take a look at it? I know you've looked at it so much, but do you think it's in the shape to start education and working with Conservation Commission and Historical Commission? How to get the bylaw passed or does it need another look or any modification?
Oh, sure, look at it.
Well, I, I just want to, I want to bring up something because I really think that we need some education. And I'm, I'm still kind of disturbed yet, but one weekend, I think when the, one Sears Road was clear cut. You know, we realized that there were a number of public shade trees that were taken, maybe three or four, but there were some, several close to the road. And, you know, you're not sure, right? But when you go back to Google Earth or Google Maps, you see them. And there were stumps, but now there's no more stumps. And there was other examples. There was a park ago, I think it was, it was, it was a, it was a, there was a number that have been not clear cut though, but Sears Road, one Sears was, was a clear cut situation. A while, a while back, I had talked to Melissa Danza of Conservation Commission. She mentioned to me that she puts together kind of like a local packet or something like that to new homeowners. And I thought, well, maybe we can put something in there about trees and not clear cutting. And there's some certain rules about when you're going to, you know, you move into a new place and you want to, you know, you want your nice big lawn, you want to take down a bunch of trees. You're allowed to do that, right? Because you own the property, but there's some principles about even on private property. Maybe keep a stand of trees. Maybe if the tree is greater than four foot in diameter, try to save it. You know, it's just principles. You can't tell a homeowner what to do. But homeowners just, I think, may not understand that public shade, public shade trees are for everybody's enjoyment and they don't actually own them.
Right.
And so how do we get out the word about that? And I think it's a problem on, on private property as well. I know that's not popular for town meeting. But I think everybody that looks at one Sears Road feels very kind of disgusted for one reason or another. Me, it's because they were, you know, you can do anything on your property, but those public shade trees add to the value of the homes on that road. That's a perfect example of a beautiful corner lot that no longer has public shade trees. So I'm just wondering whether we want to, you know, kind of look at it again and see if there's anything else that we could add or do we just want to stay away from?
I like the idea of, like, adding something for a local packet or some sort of educational stuff. So. I mean, I, I'll take a look at it because I feel like I, I mean, you did a lot of the stuff, but I feel like I contributed a little bit to the bylaw. But to see like how we can pull out the key educational pieces, because I think we did get some of that feedback around either through the select board or through other mechanisms of what people are confused by. So public right of way, what is a public shade tree? Why are we doing it? I think the environmental issues as well. And maybe it's like some sort of really simple flyer or something. But I'll, I'll, I'll take, I'll raise my hand to see if there's something that we can pull together.
So I get you with frequently asked questions. So we're.
Oh, yeah.
So I'll send that to you.
It's also usually in a building department. People come in there and they want to see the building jacket when they're buying a house, see if all the permits were done and make sure everything is permitted and whatnot. So most building departments, those are new people coming in. And they usually have a list of, these are things that need permits sometimes. And there's a list of them and it's very easy to read and then, you know, look for the details. But you need, you don't need a permit for carpet, but you do need a permit for cabinets or a tree in the room, you know. Just a thought.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so two things I can add to that. A few years ago, when we did the tree bylaw, I think chapter 153, because we were doing Tree City USA initiative. Right? So there was information from the Arbor Day Foundation and the DCR that had good information, Marnie, what you're alluding to. I think they talked about some of those things, the definitions and, you know, why, and what Debbie was talking about, you know, why, why a tree so important and that whole education side? So those two websites, the Arbor Foundation and the DCR have resources like that already that we could probably use. And then number two is, Colleen, when you were talking about a list of permits, the EDC probably like three or four years ago created a permitting guide that a few months ago, the intent was for the departments to look at it and update it and all that. But it kind of fell to the wayside by all the departments for now, because everybody got so busy. So that's there as well, if you want to tap into that permitting guide. Those are copies are out in front of the planning office. There's a bunch in the EDC. So just so you know.
That's a good idea, because I was even thinking, it's time to start thinking about Tree City USA, right?
Yeah, yep, you got to do that, you know, before the end of November, December timeframe. Comes around really fast.
Yes, it does.
And the, in the bylaw, I know I need to tweak the language around tree warden because it's the select board. So that needs to be. And then the other thing was the revolving fund and how to best do that.
Yes, that was the, still the lingering question. I had spoken to Carla, probably like two months ago when this was, or three months ago when this came up. And, you know, there's this confusion, like the revolving fund is the only way to do it. Town council still recommends that's the proper way to do it. There was some undertones of, from accounting that, you know, the town is trying to get away from revolving funds. But there's a whole list of 10, 12 revolving funds that exist now that are being used. I mean, that's actually where you want to put every, where you can put all kinds of things and then use it for, for other things as opposed to the donation fund, which is probably.
Well, I think that's what.
That's why they try.
So I think it's a separate warrant article, but we'll, we still have your email in the queue to answer that. Revolving, what, what's required to get that on the warrant? I think it's its own warrant article. But we'll confirm.
And then scenic roads.
Scenic roads. So I reached out to, so I had a meeting with Kevin Miller, who is the chair of the Historic Commission. Historical Commission. And Melissa Danza, I reached out to and requested both of their support for the scenic roads, or at least mentally have a conversation. So Melissa extended an invitation to me for July 14th to attend the Conservation Commission meeting, so I could appeal to them to see if they'd be willing to at least have a conversation. I think the key points are recognizing some of the feedback that we received at town meeting, which is these newer constructed neighborhoods, are they really a scenic road? And it's valid feedback. And I think we should consider that as we move forward with the additional, I think, of 68 streets to be named scenic roads. So my goal is to come to an alignment with historical and conservation with the hopes that the three of us can represent a new scenic bylaw. So at this point, I don't have any specifics that have changed, but I think there's at least willingness to have a conversation.
Great.
Thank you.
You're more than a marrier. Absolutely.
Other business properly before the members sign in a registry of deeds?
Yes. So I got Andrew's signature. The one that everybody else signed. But this one was actually the payroll one. So if anybody could sign this one as well. It was told it even shouldn't sign it.
Oh, I already signed.
You did, because that's all I thought I needed. Yeah.
And while the autographing is going on, the planners report?
Sure. Um, project updates. So we met with 250 Turnpike Road, which is currently office condos that they're converting to storage facility, just a quick update. They're preparing an application for I, I, I think it's major site plan versus minor for change of use from office space to storage. So we're, when that comes in, we'll, we'll check that application and let you know where that and distribute that. Open space inventory for fiscal year 2022. I'm expecting a draft report on Friday, this Friday, from Lucas Environmental on the seven locations that we contracted them to inspect. We got a few calls here and there from different parties asking questions and providing input. So we'll, when that comes in, we'll schedule them to get on. I'll do a review of it and make any revisions, suggestions to them. And then when they finalize their report, then we'll get them on the agenda to present this year's open space monitoring. Again, though, anticipating a substantially complete report on Friday. Then as far as the budget, oh, recording clerk. So I'm in the process of updating the contract for Kelly Boyd, who was the ZBA clerk. And she's very interested. She's just waiting for me to get a contract. The town has new contract formats starting this fiscal year, this next fiscal year. They're a little bit complicated. They came to town council. So I was talking to Melissa Danza today about it because she needs to do hers too. So we're going to kind of brainstorm and see what to take in, because there's a lot, it's, it's like five pages where our old contract was one, which had everything in there. So.
Can you send me a copy? I need one for the CPA, the CPC.
Sure.
What the blank one is.
For small services? Yeah, yeah, I'll get you that. We got them all. So I got all five or six as the templates. And then the next item is. Um, and then the next item is, um, the budget, uh, we'll be reconciling the budget, um, for fiscal year twenty-two, um, over the next week and a half. Um, we're on target right now, probably to have in the range of three thousand dollars remaining in the budget. Um, you know, Sarah was, uh, not full-time for several months. Um, so we have a little bit of excess there. We purchased, um, a laptop for the planning department to use if we have a senior worker, if the planning board needs a spare, or if we have a student worker or if we need one for the road. Um, we purchased two monitors in order to for us to be able to view, um, plans on a bigger scale. Um, we have the consultant services for open space inventory, uh, inspections. So once that gets finalized, I'll hone in on a, um, a bottom line. So if you have any suggestions, um, anything you think the planning department could use?
Can we monitor more open space?
Um, we can try. But the problem is, um, we try to maintain that under ten thousand dollars for the year for contract, um, solicitation reasons. Um, it's usually frowned upon if you put out another contract or add to it over ten thousand. Uh, but I'll check with accounting if it's possible.
And they're bringing educational materials together for public shade tree? Maybe there's some of that is either imprinting services or some sort of, like, digital campaign?
Correct, and it would have to be invoiced by June thirtieth, just so you know. Yeah, that's the problem. So we tried, we do have enough
People for copies? Or color copies or something like that? Can you do that?
Can you do that? Say that again?
Like a stapler's gift card, so we can, uh, do printing on the outreach things?
I don't think they would like that. I don't think that would pass the audit. I can check with the town accountant.
Yeah, my trees.
Where do we keep them?
We have, um, we have, is, does Marcy still have her hand up?
Um, yes.
We have someone with their hand up just once.
Marcy? Jones? We had your hand up.
Marcy, if you have a comment, if you could raise your hand and we'll bring you over. Oh, she's over.
No, we can't hear you.
Yeah, be muted if you're trying to talk.
Sorry, planning board. Um, I accidentally put my hand up, I didn't mean to.
Thanks for watching.
I didn't mean to, thank you.
Alright.
Alright, the last item on the planner's report is the salary surveys. I'm still working on those, um, for mine and Colleen's. Um, so I'll be doing that over the next week, um, in order to get those in for the, um, review that the town hired a consultant to do on salaries, uh, for different roles. And that is it for the planner's report.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two as written.
I'd like to just add something there too, before you approve them.
So in discussion?
Motion in the second discussion, Karina?
Yes, um, um, I just wanted to clarify that, um, the meeting minutes for five twenty-three, Kate, have to, um, include um, hold on one second, I have it right here. Um, no, they're all set, I'm sorry. It does include, um, the draft decisions for three twenty-five Turnpike. It was the six-six documents used, when that, when you approved that one, we have to add, um, the documents used were the decisions um, drafted from, um, five twenty-five, twenty-two. Sorry about that premature
Any discussion? Any more discussion on five twenty-three? Have your loose minutes? Motion in the second. Uh, Latrell, yes?
Mills, yes.
Lee Han, yes. Mary Ann, yes.
Okay.
Next.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two as written.
In the second? Any discussion? Okay, Latrell, yes?
Mills, yes.
Lee Han, yes. Mary Ann, yes.
I make a motion, we approve the meeting minutes from June sixth, two thousand twenty-two as written, knowing there will be a discussion.
In the second, and the discussion
Is, um, for me, if, um, Kate, if you could just add to the documents used under three twenty-five Turnpike, um, decision for, uh, MSPA and LID for May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Got it. Anything else? Latrell, yes?
Mills, yes.
Lee Han, yes. Mary Ann, yes.
Next meeting is July eleventh, twenty twenty-two, and August first, twenty twenty-two.
I just have a quick update.
Yep.
Um, I extended an offer to Christina Bazanson, who grew up at Southboro, I mentioned her previously, um, she's an arborist, teaches at UMass. And she, um, gives, um, a small talk on urban forest management plans, and she's able to join us that night on July eleventh. Um, she'll be here in person. Um, and I did mention to her that there's a hearing at seven oh five, that she'd be after the hearing sometime, and, and, um, I don't know what, you know, definitely when, but as we get closer on the agenda, I guess we can give her the time that she plans to be here in person.
Will she be after the hearing?
Well, she was hundred.
Two hundred? We said that was seven.
Yeah, but if there's something else, like an A and R comes in and whatnot.
Oh, oh, did we?
Like, if there's an A and R that comes in, that would go before.
So if, if we set it for seven, can we have her before that, before?
Do you wanna start at six thirty?
Wait, what day is she coming?
July eleven. July eleven, she said you have it July eleven, the next meeting. You could certainly start earlier, if, if everybody wanted to before seven.
She said she's available earlier, like, I think I asked her when she said, you know, she gave out at six thirty or something, uh, I, she's traveling.
Um, I, I'd like to just point out that, um, this morning at the Shopsey meeting, um, they are going to have a six-thirty meeting that evening, um, with Jesse Stein there in order to have a quick meeting to reorg and approve some meeting minutes. So, um, you, Jesse Stein wouldn't be able to attend if, if you put it at six thirty. But we'll know closer if two hundred Turnpike is going to continue or not.
With six forty-five, or? Just
I don't know. Yeah.
I mean, she said she was okay with eight o'clock. I, I said eight, because I thought there was a hearing, so we can ask her to show up at seven.
It's easier to put her on after the business. I mean, right now, it's just two hundred, but there might be something coming at, you know, you never know.
Yeah.
But we could still, it's up to the, the Chair. The Chair could say that it could be sooner. We always try to do the hearings first, but if a new uh, application comes in, which they can't, they don't have enough time, um, for a public hearing, unless an A and R, and A and Rs usually go fast. And they're, they're, they're not gonna have time for an A and R either, because
You know ahead of time where they're gonna speak, like the, uh, two hundred Turnpike, right? Usually they text you or email you.
Like, there's not much notice.
Right.
But if she's gonna be here anyway.
Yeah, she's gonna be here anyway, but I, I mean, just to be respectful. Like, okay, the, the applicant's gonna come and actually talk, it's gonna take at least an hour, so, yeah, we're, we're
Well, I can certainly let them know. We also discussed, uh, I mean, maybe she was available to come at seven, wait, maybe in case she can start earlier. We also discussed, um, inviting the select board to join us. And I want to just check in about that as well, sort of an educational thing.
I would agree. I think you could also invite, uh, me, Ray, and just me, Ray, and Karen Gallegos, and some of the people on just kind of the value of her, what she's doing.
I'm pretty interested to join too, right? Been chatting with her.
So maybe, you know, just send out a little invitation, hey, everyone, it's gonna be great. You're, you're welcome to come. Learn something.
Yeah, so I say eight o'clock for now, and then
Well, on the agenda.
Yeah, but she's not a here, it's only the hearings.
Before you adjourn, I would just like to say one more thing. I'm sorry, um, I wanna thank Kate Battles, this is her last, um, meeting minutes for the planning board. And, um, I'm sorry to have her, I'm sorry to see her go. She did a fabulous job. She really shortened, um, the workload for the planning department by doing such diligent meeting minutes.
Know where she lives.
Yes. I second that. You, you do a fabulous job.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I, it's, I actually, it's been almost four years, uh, because I keep looking back, I'm like, oh, I've done just under like two hundred sets of minutes. Um, you guys are an incredible board to work with. Um, thank you for being so supportive. I've learned an absolute ton. Um, but, um, it really, it's been a pleasure, and I speak so highly of all of you all the time to everybody I see, so I'll be downstairs, so come visit.
And I know, I know how difficult it was, it is, because when I was on the ARPA committee, I did minutes of it, it is so hard to do, it took forever. And I didn't do good ones like
I posted them, yes, you did. But no, it, you know, I do, um, I strangely, um, I have really enjoyed it, and I've just learned a ton, so that's been really a lot of fun, actually, so.
Thank you, Kate.
I work for the town clerk. I have for, um, a, a good amount of time as, um, an election warden and at town meetings, right? And so then, um, he pulled me in, he needed a little extra help down there, so, I'm like an assistant to the assistant town clerk. Yeah, it's great, it's really fun, so.
You've been awesome.
Thank you so much. I really, I really appreciate it. I do, it's so nice.
Marcy Paul, I worked one summer, um, in the acting town clerk's office, if you need any help.
I know, I have two of my kids work a little bit down there too, and, uh, it's been, they started during COVID, it's that they worked at the elections and stuff, and, uh, it's been, it's been great, it is great. But I love working for Karina, I've loved it, it's been great, so.
Well, thanks, and your children are charming as well. They're always so polite and courteous.
I'll should do adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, Latrell, yes?
Mills, yes.
Lee Han, yes. Mary Ann, yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Bye.